Good evening folks, thanks for joining us this evening. We're a couple of minutes from beginning, but before we begin, before we begin I'd like to let you know that there are speaker cards on the table. Uh, we're gonna do this in a kind of an organized format where everybody's gonna have an opportunity to say their piece. This is gonna be a time certain meeting that will be closing at 7:30. So, uh, we'll give everybody an opportunity to fill out cards now and bring them up to the clerk over here at the end of the dais. And then we'll just alternate between opposing, supporting, and opposing and let everybody say their bit. Uh, our city attorney will be the primary respondent to your comments, concerns, and questions. Uh, we will make the council available, uh, for short responses if they feel compelled to do that, but in order to facilitate giving everybody an opportunity to speak, uh, we'd like to try and keep, uh, our, our comments to a move. So, we'll be starting in just a couple of minutes. If you haven't done so, please come up and get a speaker card if you'd like to speak. If you don't wanna speak but you wanna make your opinion, then you can also fill out a speaker card and say that you don't wanna speak but you want your opinion to be known that you support or oppose it. Thank you. Matt, do you have a little bit of time? Now, why don't you come and hold me this stuff?
I should never have been here. I worked there. I worked there. I never did it again. I never did it again. I worked there. 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 I worked there.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thanks very much for joining us this evening. This is a public workshop concerning potential orders for short-term rentals. And, uh, before we begin, if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and the children of it, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, I've mentioned some of this before, just kinda keep everybody out of the pot and some more people came in, but, uh, tell you what we're gonna do. Uh, this is an informal workshop, it's primarily to take public comment, and this is concerning the short-term rentals ordinance, it's in the process. Uh, if you haven't done so, please get a card, a speaker card, fill it out, bring it up to the clerk, the clerk will, uh, bring this file based off of what you're talking about and will call everybody up, uh, and give you an opportunity, about three minutes, to tell us what's on your mind. Uh, we're gonna ask the council to, uh, engage your cue board, put your light on only if you feel compelled to talk. We're gonna ask the city attorney to handle most of the comments, uh, and, and concerns. Uh, one of the things I just wanna emphasize before we begin, it's, it's not our intent to stop short-term rentals. It's not our intent to try and stop a good thing from, from happening, which has been going on here in Jacksonville for a long time. Quite frankly, we haven't done a, uh, short-term rental ordinance, uh, like the other cities have because we haven't had a problem. And, uh, we know that a lot of you are owners and you're gonna have people, uh, coming in and taking your short-term rentals, uh, and, and using and joining those, and that's part of revenue for you. We're not trying to stop or inhibit that. What we hope to accomplish is provide a mechanism so that we can enforce issues with the bad actors, and we do have some bad actors. Uh, what I'm gonna do to start this process is, uh, I'm gonna give a few minutes to Mr. Matt Malaney. Uh, Matt was the one that kinda brought this forward, uh, about a year or so ago, and also volunteered to travel with me to Tallahassee to speak before the House, Senate Appropriations Committee, and that's one of the reasons that we were able to get the bill temporarily postponed so that, because of Matt's efforts, so we appreciate that. And Matt, uh, give me the floor if you can, try and keep it to about five or so minutes.
I'll do my best. Um, first of all, I just wanna say, uh, you know, this is a pretty significant turnout, and it's pretty wonderful. Uh, you know, our country works, and it's because people come together, cash it out, talk about things, and try to find some fair and sensible compromise, okay, to deal issues that impact us all. Um, I know that many of you are short-term rental owners, and I'm sure you're all wonderful individuals, okay? Um, all I ask is that you listen, uh, to my story, and the, and the story of my wife as well. I don't know if my wife is here. She just made her. Yeah, thank you. I live over on Warner Street. Uh, it's, it's right near Sunshine Park. It's 200 feet away from bus stop. It's around the corner from CB's Elementary School. Uh, we bought our, what, probably about eight years ago, uh, we saw our home go up from foundation to finish. It's a pretty wonderful experience to have. It's pretty great to walk up that front with your little kid, your daughter, and have her sticker head out that square of their grand temple where the window is gonna be. You can see, this is gonna be your room, buddy. Uh, we've had a wonderful life there, a wonderful life.
Matt, I hate to stop your momentum, but you might wanna hold that microphone for a few seconds.
Sure.
That's okay.
March of 2018, um, the family living next to us disappeared. Okay, so father, mother, uh, they're two young brothers. No force of law, uh, just disappeared, and we soon found out that the property had been purchased by an LLC. Within a few weeks, it was converted into a full-time tour rental. And it was publicly marketed, then was accommodating 17 people.
Microphone.
Sorry, that's accommodating 17 people.
Can you fold the microphone?
Sure. Um, I think, I think that number has gone, sorry, I think that number has gone down since 16. Uh, and, you know, I'm giving you a, a, a number of photographs to see what that looks like, okay? Um, it has been a difficult year for my family. Uh, the property's been rented pretty much every week, uh, I think except for a few weeks in November, okay? Um, and as I said, it has been very, very difficult. Um, you can look at the photographs, and I could go on and on, but what I want to do instead is just to read, kind of an accounting of April to, um, June, okay? The sprint of this year. Um, and this just deals with noise after 10:00 p.m. This little painting picture. Uh, my, my wife was forced to call the police at midnight Thursday on April 14th, a walk night, Duval County Schools were off. A large group was drinking and having a TPC party in the backyard. Earlier at 9:00 p.m., a cluster of three cars was illegally parked in front of the no parking signs on Horn. In addition to the packed driveway, total of eight vehicles, renters inviting their guests. Police were called, and that instance is why we deal with the illegal parking caused by the park. These vehicles moved to Sunshine Park after park hours. Two, my wife was forced to call the police at 3:00 a.m. Sunday on May 5th, a school walk night, a group in the backyard. Days previous, Friday night, May 3rd, my wife was set to call the police as well. After 10:00 p.m., let a rainstorm drive the group inside out in Chicago that Friday night. My wife was forced to call the police at 11:00 p.m. Saturday, May 12th, a large group of young people drinking and having a party in the backyard. This party had been going on for hours. That weekend, the no parking signs on the one were down, they'd been removed after TPC, fed as available, cars from Georgia, Illinois, Florida plates lined our street. And after this weekend, my wife was forced to get to the Jackson Beach Police Station regarding the parking issue, and we thank the Jackson Beach Police for promptly staking no parking temporary, uh, police orcs on the side of Horn to bring some sanity to the situation. My wife was forced to call the police at 10:00 p.m. Monday, May 20th, a school walk night, a large group from Georgia, fed available, with screaming kids, were in the backyard pool, they'd been out for an hour and showed no sign of stopping. I have a 30-minute audio/video recording of this 30 minutes prior to our phone call. Just listen to it. You understand why we have to call. Our own child had school the next day, a geometry EFC exam. My wife was forced to call the police Saturday, June 1st, 11:35 p.m., a large group from Illinois in the backyard of the St. John's STR property. Notice I said St. John's property, because the property behind the property next door to us has been bought by the St. LLC ownership, and has been converted into a full-time STR rental. Um, a large group from Illinois in the backyard of the St. John's STR property. Please, go through those photographs. Find a transport shuttle. Days earlier on Thursday afternoon, a school day around 5:00 p.m., this transport shuttle dropped off a large group on Horn. Our neighbor, my neighbor Chad, counted 12 renters, that's the data show, 12. He texted me in a photo along with his count. His texts are available if you wanna read them. These 12 people joined, the three vehicles worth of people, Illinois, Florida tags, already got the property. Three other instances are worth mentioning within the same three-month timeframe. On Friday, May 10th, I head outside to my car, it's time to pick up my daughter from school. A different huge transport shuttle was blocking my exit, that is in there. One car was in the driveway of the STR property, my neighbor happens to outside too, were both taken aback by the size of the shuttle. Eventually, I had to grab something from inside, when I'm inside, my neighbor counts knocking, wider than the shuttle. As a parent, it is concerning to know that so many people are being ferried next door with no indication. They are during the school week. Memorial Day weekend, I have a two-minute audio/video recording from Sunday, and separate 20, 20-minute audio recording, video recording from Friday that capture that weekend. Vehicles cycled in and out of our neighborhood all weekend, two parked directly in front of our home on Sunday. On Monday morning, as I was taking my daughter to school, a Beachview Rentals delivery truck was parked in front of our home. This delivery truck was picking up tables and a stack of chairs from the property. So, an event was set. Find the Beachview Rentals delivery truck.
Matt, I hate to stop you, but while you, you just kinda wrap it up, I mean...
Done. That's our life. It's been our life for 15 months. Do I have, do my wife and I have concerns for our daughter's safety? Yes, we do. Approximately 600 to 700 people cycled next door over that time. We've probably had about 60 or 70 separate rooms. We have a two, we have a high school bus stop 200 feet away from our home. Next semester, I teach at FSCJ, I've been teaching there for 17 years. I will be teaching an 8:00 a.m. class for the first time in over a decade. Well, over a decade, why? So I can get my daughter to Fletcher and back to Fletcher. She's not gonna use that bus stop. Why? Because if something were to happen, my wife and I would be crucified for being irresponsible parents, given the transience that's going on next door to us. What's happened to our home value? I am a teacher, my wife is a nurse, like most middle-class people, our home is our most important and largest investment. What has happened to our home value?
One minute.
What has happened to our ability to sell to another family? It has been decimated. I'm sorry if I'm getting angry. I promised myself I would not. I know that there are a lot of really good people here, okay? But what's happened next door is difficult, exceedingly difficult to deal with. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
The whole thing at this point is just ultimately back and forth between support and opposed, give everybody an opportunity. I understand that there are some people that might have questions about the, the ordinance that was currently written, or suggestions. Encourage you to vocalize those when you come to the podium. Also, uh, if, if you hear a point being made several times and you wanna make the same point, in order to keep this as time-constraining, realistic as possible, please, just try and bring new information to the podium, that would be helpful as well. Okay, uh, first, Greg Phipps, Greg, if you can forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes. Start with your name and address, sir.
Hello, my name is Greg Phipps. Address is 1.7th 10th Avenue South. Um, Matt, that was touching, and I'm sorry you have to live through that. That is obviously not a good situation to be a part of, so, but what I wanna shed to you is a different picture, is our property, okay? We have one short-term rental that we maintain very, very well. We, uh, look at the people before we give them any type of rental, we're able to look at their history, and we're able to deny them, or say yes, we can. As I read through what is being proposed, I like to continue to believe that this was raised from just a few local citizens, and I wish you would've had included some of us owners in drafting this up originally and going to the state, uh, because we also have concerns and we wanted to add to this. Um, so, within this, a lot of local cities have dropped their proposals already, and Seminole County is one of those that just recently dropped it down to Orlando. City of Jacksonville just dropped theirs as well, and I would like to consider, you guys all think about doing that. But let me share some information about our property. We have had almost 100 guests, do not have had any single complaints from anybody. We have a five-star rating and are now super hosts. We maintain that, and I would actually say that ours is one of the best properties on the block. We are cleaning it every two to three days. Anything wrong with it at all, we are fixing it immediately and not adding it to the honeydew to-do list. It just has to be done, because every time we get a new person in there, they are rating us as hosts. We wanna maintain, uh, a good property and super host. Uh, secondly, there's definitely a financial impact to Jacksonville Beach. I know you, uh, stated that you wanna continue to have this, but I thought I'd share with you just a few of what we've, uh, kind of estimated. With having at least 100 guests, we believe we've had about $38,000 in supporting restaurants and bars locally from the guests that we have had. About $18,000 in...
They're not gonna clap, guys, we gotta keep the recording, please.
About $9,000 in just local retail business, and $14,000 in buying different groceries, foods, and beverages. We do not want more regulations and rules, but we'd like to make sure that we are, uh, as this would add cost to the City of Jacksonville Beach. I don't know if that's in the budget yet to, to be able to enforce these and add all these regulations. I also want to ask that you guys actually enforce what's currently on the books, enforce the parking, enforcing the noise, and the garbage and waste collection. So if you enforce that and not be adding the costs, we do want some of the bad apples taken care of. But what you currently have written right now is not, uh, would not do that. I know that some of us have pulled together and have a new proposal that's kinda redlined, and I'll take it upon myself to share that with all of the council members afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Phipps.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, moving to Tony Comar. Tony, if you can forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
That was, uh, a good presentation.
Start with your name and address.
Okay, Tony Comarant, I live at 533 Grove, 11th Avenue South, Jacksonville Beach. I have been impacted by the investors, by rentals, tearing down single-family homes around me and making them rentals. Now, if the real estate lobbyists here, which you'll hear a lot of them, would pay attention, they could make this into a money-making operation, because I think the reason they're so upset is because the city attorney did a beautiful job in writing this. It follows the law precisely. What I wanna point out is, you know, ask, how many licenses from the Department of Public Regulations are out there? How many, um, have all the correct tax laws? We want to be sure that we have the right contact information, where they're located, that they're paying their taxes, and they're a member of, or they have a license from the Department of Public Regulation. Support the neighbors. Atlantic Beach, Neptune Beach has laws, we need them too. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Janelle Wilson? We're, we're, we're not gonna clap anymore. Okay, thank you. Doubtful, Janelle Wilson, if you would please give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, thanks for your counsel. I'm Janelle Wilson, 2014, South Oceanfront. I'm also the owner of All South Realty located in South Jacksonville Beach. For, for 30-plus years, you've seen the sign lit up that says, "Call Us for Vacation Rentals." And I understand some of the issues that Mr. Com, uh, Mr. Lenny has, but that's a few of the, the problems we have. I have short-term rentals all around me, some of the neighbors are here, and we've never had a problem. It's about the screening and enforcement laws we have. As I've stated before, there are a lot of positive aspects to short-term rentals. We have become a destination for medical tourism. Every single day, we get calls from people from Veo, Proton 7, looking for places to stay while we're here for treatment. Another one is people that are working here right now in our rentals. We have guys that are working on the, you know, the coral ships in Mayport, doing the IT work on the ships, and they'd rather stay in a, a dwelt property short-term than a hotel, even though they have a hotel for deal. Many other people come to our area to invest their properties to retire in. In the meantime, while they are waiting for retirement, they use this, this property as a rental to subsidize taxes, insurance that they owe the property. And they're not just for rentals, they're planning to move here eventually. And also, people from other areas, they shop here, they eat out a lot more than they, the regular long-term tenants, and they provide money to our, to our economy at the beaches. Another benefit is that rentals for six months or less have to pay a 13% tax to the state, so the state benefits, the City of Jacksonville, and it also dribbles down to the City of Jacksonville Beach, because we've used that for a lot of our parks and recreation facilities that we have. An argument has been made that short-term rentals cause, get the area to, the values of the area to go down. In the last few months, we've had at least three properties that sold for more because they could be used to short-term rentals.
(Laughter).
As, as this ordinance is proposed, and again, I understand what you're trying to accomplish to make the neighborhoods, you know, more livable or quieter neighborhood, but this proposed ordinance would severely restrict the availability of rentals. proposed ordinance would severely restrict the availability of rentals. The requirements are so stringent that many would, would have choose to try to sell their property or to get rid of it, rather than to abide by the hefty rules and regulations and the fees that they would have to pay that have been proposed. This would result, this was going to other areas and other cities, and that would cause us to lose out as property owners and as a city with the taxes that we would not be Another result would be that the owners would continue renting without registry. If this is so onerous, it's going to be difficult for people to understand what all they need to do. There's already a state law in place, chapter five oh nine, that deals with short-term rentals and lodging. And that's online, and many of us out here that do that kind of business adhere to. So there's already licensing in the state. There's also safety requirements that are already in place that we have to abide by. And on a personal note, this would greatly and severely affect my business that I've been building up for over thirty years, and I've been working on, the short-term rentals, this is a big part of my business. And a lot of the owners would choose not to continue renting, either to sell or to, to take it over themselves, they have a castle contract, take over themselves, and they could do it under the radar. This is what happened in Atlantic Beach, when Atlantic Beach banned short-term rentals. So I urge you to weigh the consequences of the ordinance that's proposed. While I can sympathize with owners of the neighborhoods that I've stated, out of almost four hundred properties, short-term properties in our area, I only know of three or four complaints that we've had, and we're going to punish everyone for these few people that have problems. We already have the laws in place, as we mentioned before, with noise ordinance, with the parking, and with garbage. Let's enforce those laws rather than create other laws that we can't really enforce. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Phelps, Mary, if you can come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Mary Phelps, I live at nine thirty four, Tenth Street North in Jacksonville Beach. Um, you know, I just wanted to come and say that I am in favor of an ordinance. I did a quick check on DRVO today, and it shows that there are over four hundred eighty-nine rentals in Jacksonville Beach. There are quite a few that touted, you know, twelve, fifteen, seventeen, or more people can sleep in these places. I don't know where those people would park. And then Airbnb shows three hundred-plus rentals in Jacksonville Beach. So obviously, we have a huge amount of, um, of short-term rentals available. Add to that that we have four hotels being built that'll have that many more rooms that can be rented out on short-term bases. You know, I just think that we need to have something in place that will protect the homeowners. Um, I do believe, just as you said in there, Latham, that it'll help eliminate some of the bad actors and allow those who are already concerned and, and following the rules and regulations that are out there to continue to be able to rent their properties for short-term, um, for, in a short term. Uh, my biggest concerns are parking. I have called the cities or the police department multiple times on a particular rental down the street from me. Um, and you know, they'll come and move the park or move the car somewhere else, and then the next night, they're right back. Waste removal with trash and cans that are overflowing, noise, and I have a little problem with houses that are marketed to sleep eighteen, sixteen, 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 fifteen, fifteen. Uh, one of them only has two bathrooms. I don't know how you get fifteen people in a house that has two bathrooms. Um, but I guess somebody's doing it. Um, you know, I just think that we do have some people out there that maybe are pushing the limits, and I think that needs to be stopped. So I'm just speaking on behalf of those of us who think that an ordinance is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mike Vincy, Mike, if you can come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Mike Vincy, two fourteen, Tallwood Road, Jacksonville Beach. I own, welcome, own rentals, and also own three short-term rental properties in Jacksonville Beach. First of all, I'd like to thank y'all all for having this workshop. I feel it's been a good opportunity for all of us to learn more about the short-term rental business. I think we've all been surprised on how much we've learned in the previous meetings. Um, I recall the city manager mentioning how shocked he was when he found out there's over four hundred short-term rentals already operating in Jacksonville Beach. I was equally surprised when I decided to get into this business a few years ago, but I think it's a great testament to our city that we can support a bad level of short-term rentals and that people wanted to come and visit our city. Now we're here to discuss how best to manage this business going forward, but I hope that most of the people in the room realize that we're more or less on the same team. We want regulation, we want ordinances, we want enforcement with those people who violate the regulations and ordinance. Uh, we are just not in an agreement of the currently proposed ordinances. We want this business to have a positive impact on our city, and I believe that it has. To better understand our business, a group of us have hired one of the most knowledgeable attorneys in the state of Florida that has over twenty-five years of experience in our industry to kind of help us guide ourselves through this ordinance. Uh, so we spent a considerable amount of time and money to discuss ordinances that have worked in other cities that have handled the residents' concerns, but at the same time has not negatively impacted the business. And I know a copy of these suggestions have been emailed to Oggale. Uh, hopefully you'll find this helpful moving forward in your planning. Um, I realize this business is not perfect, um, and that we're going to have a guest in time and time that does not follow the rules of our homes or of our cities. This is the same with long-term renters, it's the same with homeowners, it's the same with business owners, but I strongly believe this is a very, very small percentage of those guests that we allow to stay in our homes. I think that communication is the key, that's why I feel that this workshop is beneficial for both parties. I'm, I'm also always looking for ways to improve the business, limit any neighbors' concerns, and increase the positive impact on our great city. I just want to reiterate that I believe we're on the same team with the same end goal. I love Jacksonville Beach, I've lived here over twenty years, and the last thing I wanted to do is see my business impact the city in a negative way. Uh, I feel very fortunate that I have a business that is able to share our cities with those from around the country and around the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Liz Parkham, Liz, if you can come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Liz Parkham, on one six nine two Westland Drive. Um, I'm here as a concerned resident and taxpayer, and I would like to thank all of you for letting us speak and giving us the opportunity to discuss our opinions. Uh, I'd like to contribute that I feel that we do need a short-term rental ordinance here in our city, and I support one. However, I do not support the new draft of the ordinance as written, and I feel that these need to be written to benefit all parties, including property owners, neighbors, short-term rental managers, and guests. And of course, we've all said there are bad apples that allow their guests to park on the street and create noise, and we already have the ordinances in place to take care of those items. The section of those ordinance, I will list a few, um, the ones that require property owners to submit sketches of the floor plans of their homes, require certain documents to be displayed in their home specifically on the refrigerator, subject their homes to annual inspections, the assignment of a twenty-four center responsible party, uh, in my opinion, a complete, it's a complete governmental overreach and a breach of personal property rights. The new ordinance should be tailored to registration of short-term rental properties and enforcement of registration only. Um, I'd also like to include that I do have a short-term rental property on my street, and we've had zero problems with their guests. So my suggestion is to rewrite this ordinance to benefit all parties involved, not just the few, but well, just ground neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz. Gary and Lorraine, Kenny?
Well, I, I did it first. Hi, my name is Greg, Kenny, ten sixty-one Osceola, Jacksonville, Florida. Thank you for allowing us to participate in this workshop. Uh, I just wanted to, you know, a lot has been said, and you know, I think you're going to get a lot of duplicate people commenting on things here. The one thing that I just want to reiterate is, is, is what it does to the neighborhood as a whole, and I just want to, you know, I, I think the real estate, if people want to, you know, they want to sell these things at a higher rate, and it's because they're paying that, and it doesn't take into consideration with this for everybody in the neighborhood. Uh, second thing is, um, the utilities and the garbage and the sewage and the water, I think, you know, they, they may have to be taxed at a higher rate, like a hotel or something like that, because it is in a residential area and not a hotel area. And I'm just kind of wondering, what kind of feedback have we gotten from the police department? Because I'm sure they're getting a little sick and tired of being called every, every, several times, you know, at, at two minutes after ten o'clock at night for parking and for partying and everything. The last point I do want to make is, is the amount of people that they are putting in these, like the one person mentioned earlier, um, you know, when you sit there and go, it can sleep sixteen, but no parties are allowed, well, life of sixteen is a party, so, uh, I, I just, you know, I just think that needs to be regulated and, and, uh, thank you again for your time, and I'll let Mrs. Penny have the last minute and a half.
I got a minute and a half. For the most part, everything that we had written down has been stated. I just wanted to reiterate that there needs to be some form of zoning requirements in this. I'm not a political person, I don't really know what the fine print has said. I know the people are both residents and visitors. This is the state of Florida, I'm born and raised here, and this has been a state that has focused on tourism since I was a toddler. Um, the thing that's changed is social media has turned our little world into a world where you can say anything, book a room any which way you want. The world has gone into the VRVOs and, and the short-term rental environment, and in many, 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 many places, it's a wonderful alternative to other options. Uh, we're in a single-family residential neighborhood, with schools, with children, with babies, with moms, with dads. I don't get at all how short-term rentals make sense in that kind of a community. We're not on the beach, we're not a ski-in, ski-out resort, and, and it just doesn't make sense to me when you buy a home in a single-family residential neighborhood because they have great schools and it's a great quality of life to raise your life and your family. That all of a sudden, you're living across from a hotel. So maybe we look at how far from the beach these are supposed to proliferate, because they're, they're popping up everywhere since that one woman pointed out. Thank you for your time, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Mary Jacoby, Mary, if you can come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Jacoby, Mary Kendall Jacoby, and I reside at two ten Tallwood Road, Jacksonville Beach. Um, my family's been in Jacksonville Beach since nineteen sixty-three. I'm going to just read what I have, because I'm not going to just talk it off the cap, but I did want to say that I did not see anything of safety of the residents, of the rest on this thing. Safety of the people in the neighborhood, besides the people in the short-term rental, and I think that's a biggie, and I think we need to address that. My family settled in Jacksonville Beach in nineteen sixty-three, when I was in grade school. I had attended Jacksonville Beach schools and taught in Jacksonville Beach schools. We have always enjoyed neighborhoods where we felt safe, had peace of mind, privacy was respected, and we experienced a good quality of life. Those are four things that need to be on here. Being able to live peaceful, a peaceful existence and have a good quality of life. The beach has been known for such neighborhoods for many, many years. Losing these kinds of neighborhoods is what is at stake. In a time when many areas of the city do not have these qualities, we need to treasure them, and we need to work to keep them. Having done some research, I have concluded that single-family neighborhoods across the country are worried about the peaceful, safe fabric of their neighborhoods. People are upset, and I understand this. My family and I have been the victims of this now also. Having spent seven months of the last year in a wheelchair, I was very anxious during those days when my husband was at work. I never knew what kind of transits were staying next door and what I would do if something happened. I couldn't drive yet. Young families, retirees, hard-working members of single-family neighborhoods should not feel unprotected. Neighborhoods are zoned residential for a reason. They are not conducting business. That's just common sense. The business being run in a residential zone is wrong and totally unacceptable. Rules made up by short-term rental owners cannot be enforced. There's no security. Neighbors are being placed in the position of calling the owners when things go awry. Just what I wanted to retire for. I, I taught for forty years, and now my house is finally paid, paid up, and I'm going to have to call every time somebody's parking wrong or there's too much noise. That's not my idea of my retirement. I resent this.
Mary, can you wrap it up, please?
And I won't contend with it. If codes are broken or my peace and safety is at risk, I'll simply call the police department and have a record made.
Thank you, sir.
I want to, I want to stop, I want to show you a quote from a magazine.
How about not?
Thank you very much. Uh, Robert Groof, I'm sorry, Tim Marsh is next. Tim, if you can come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Tim Marsh, twenty-eleven Gale Avenue. Um, my wife and I, we own a VRVO right next door to us, it's eleven-hundred square foot townhouse. Um, we oppose the current regulation, uh, because it's excessive, it's draconian, and possibly we want you to stand up against any legal challenge. But let me also say that my wife and I believe that we do need a license and we do need regulations, we do need to respect the owners and the neighbors, uh, we need to listen to what all the people here who have opposed this say, but as one of the gentlemen said, we're all on the same team here, and this regulation goes way too far, way too far. Uh, our townhouse is a two-bedroom, one and a half-bath, and that means we get three people, based on what I've read, okay? So that means, and we, my wife and I, we haven't advertised specifically, um, it's only weekly or monthly, but we also have included, if you're going to Mayo Clinic for treatment, to contact us personally for a rate and flexibility within timeframe, I'm willing to want to stay. Because based on this regulation, I don't know if everybody who's opposed it has looked at it, says that a couple can come, one supporting the other while they have treatment, but if your kids want to come and visit, as long as you bring one kid, that's okay. Don't bring two. Okay, that's what this regulation says. So I, I would just ask you that, to really look at this from both sides, because they both need to be respected. There's, there's five areas, again, if you want to take notes. We talked about the problem, the magnitude of the problem. We talked about, there's about eight hundred, um, short-term rentals. There's four hundred and some odd in VRVOs, there's three hundred and sixty in Airbnb. We don't know how many of those overlap, right? I don't know, you don't know. How many of those are within communities that have HOAs, that right there and then are regulated? So what is the magnitude of the problem? Certainly, some of these, like Matt, have a major problem, and they need to be addressed, but how large is this problem? Um, and I think that's an important fact to know. And what are you trying to regulate? Is it the tax revenue? Is it nuisance? Because we certainly know that we've got codes against nuisance, that's part of our ordinance. Is it parking? To be honest with you folks, four of you sat here in two thousand twelve, new, in two thousand twelve, we have a suburban parking issue. This is a little different, but we have a parking issue in our area. Do we not keep? We mentioned it in two thousand twelve, we know. Okay, so moving on, do we fully understand the code? There's twenty-one pages here. Nineteen of them are about codes. And, and there's, there's a lot of things, for instance, sleeping room meeting, single-family, what does that mean? Hardwiring, carbon monoxide, according to the state, it's only supposed to be for new residences. So again, all of these things need to be considered, and finally, are you, if you put the regulations in, are you going to be able to fix the problems that all of these people that are opposing are asking you to fix? And that's very important.
Thank you, Ken, appreciate it. Nancy Garcia? Nancy? Nancy, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address. We all have three minutes. Let me take the three minutes together.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Nancy Garcia, representing the Northeast Florida Association of Realtors, 413 South Third Street, Jackson Beach. First, I want to thank you all for taking the time to take input from all of the affected parties on this ordinance. We really appreciate that. I know local governments across the country are grappling with this issue. It's a new issue, and it's not easy. This afternoon, you always get an email from me on behalf of NEFA with some comments on the current draft. I won't reiterate those. No sense in repeating that. But I just want to point out one kind of general comment is this current ordinance is extremely cumbersome and very hard to decipher. And that's from someone who reads ordinance on fairly regular basis. As the gentleman mentions, it's 21 pages, and it is very, very cumbersome. I believe we all share the same goal. We want to make sure taxes are paid. We want to make sure neighborhoods are safe, and we want to make sure our visitors are safe and welcome. I urge you to consider those goals as you consider how to address this issue. Our recommendation would be that we pass a basic regulation, address those goals, and if you feel like it's not addressing the situations, then you can always come back and amend it. Again, this is a new issue, and we've seen, I've seen multiple ordinances. I've seen ordinances from my colleagues across the country, and there are so many different ways to approach this, and I don't think anybody sounds the right way yet. We just would recommend that you take a positive approach, let's address everybody's property rights, and let's be the city that gets it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Robert Rubenstein. Robert, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address. We all have three minutes, sir.
I'm Robert Rubenstein. I live at 3007 Ocean Drive South, Jackson Beach. I am for short-term rentals. I've owned rental properties east of 3rd Street in Jacksonville Beach since the early 90s. Mine are mostly long-term rentals. I want to remind everybody here that the purpose of this ordinance is not, and this meeting is not to up or down on short-term rentals. They're all already here. In 2014, the Florida Legislature passed a amendment that granted cities the right to form ordinances like we're trying to do so that there would be some fair control with short-term rentals. But what it didn't do was to prohibit short-term rentals nor the duration of tenancy of short-term rentals. So we have to remember that. It's not up or down. We have short-term rentals. The Legislature of Florida is saying that they will still be here. I think in the wearas sections of this proposed ordinance, and I've studied the draft, the wearas section, there's two sections in here on page one of 21 pages of this proposed ordinance that has some derogatory language regarding short-term rentals. It says that they create more noise, and some of them do. They lower property values. Canell Wilson pointed out that the property values did not come down. They actually went up to a real near short-term rentals. I have a short-term rental that is two blocks from where I live. I live on the ocean, in South Beach. Two blocks, there's a short-term rental. I pass it twice a day, every day. I see the cars in the driveway. It's a very nice house with a pool. It's kept up. They're quiet as a mouse. I talked to the guy who lives across the street. That's what he said. They're quiet as a mouse. So I think there are short-term rentals that give us some problems as the wearas section states, but they're in the minority. The majority of them are well-kept and don't let the negative few overrule the vast amount. Let's keep them. Have a good Jackson Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. DeeDee Tamborino, is that close?
Yes, great.
Thank you.
My name is DeeDee Tamborino, 12384 clearly being trailed. I grew up in Jacksonville Beach, born and bred here. I am one of four sisters who inherited a property in South Jacksonville Beach when my mother passed away last spring. We decided as a family that we wanted to maintain our childhood home, and the only way we could do that was to turn it into a short-term rental. I attended the Beach's Watch Meeting a couple of weeks ago, and in my shock and amazement, was told that there were over 400 short-term rentals in our community, but only eight were in compliance. The council members shared that information with me. Our property is one of those eight. The agenda item that I wanted to address was the parking standards. I realize more space to park, more people. Our home sleeps six, and we have gotten five-star reviews from multiple guests. We've been in this home since 1963, and if our four-sister group was to have a meeting or a dinner at our home, we could not meet the parking standards that are in this ordinance as it has been written. I would like to read a couple of paragraphs out of a letter that we sent to the council in early June, and I'm just going to read from here. "We selected a property management company to handle the day-to-day operations of our short-term rentals so that we would be in compliance with state and county fee schedules, taxes, licensing permitting, et cetera. We paid them a handsome fee to handle this on our behalf, and they have done an outstanding job. We were intentional in the way our property was established as a short-term rental. We set specific parameters with regard to the number of guests our property could hold at any given time. We set parameters with regard to length of stay, with a three-night minimum, age of guests, number of vehicles parked at any given time. We worked hard to respect the rights of property owners around us. We held an open house and invited the neighbors to attend to see how we had renovated the property and understand how the property would be used from this day forward. Our neighbors have been extremely supportive and appreciative of the way we handle our business. Our neighbors also have access to our property if they wish. We intentionally placed a guestbook in our home to better understand the guests who chose our home over others. We have had guests from Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, Nevada, California, Texas, Maryland, and even as far away as France. One family in particular came to visit their son, who is currently serving in the military and is based at Mayport Naval Station. They have not seen him in over a year. A family from Virginia sought out our home as the perfect location to celebrate their twins' 21st birthday. Our guest from France came to visit her nephew, who is attending the University of North Florida. Another family came to support their mother while she underwent a surgical procedure at Mayo Clinic. In the past six months, our home has become a place to relax, refresh, and reunite with families from across the country while also patronizing local restaurants, gas stations, grocery stores, retail outlets, and enjoying the sand and surf of Jacksonville Beach." Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee. Appreciate it. Nancy Richard Lane. Nancy, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address. We all have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Lamy, and I live on Horn Street, 2546 Horn Street, and I'm in favor of regulation of short-term rentals. I really applaud all the short-term rental owners who have been responsible and who have not been a nuisance to their neighbors and who've tried to be conscientious of the fabric of the neighborhood. Unfortunately, that hasn't been our experience. How I'm a nurse also, and how I wish that my patients lived with the property next to my house. Our property next to my house sleeps, is advertised for 17 people. I think the biggest worry that I have is the fabric of the community, the neighbors on my street. I hope you guys don't sell because we're not going to stay if your house goes to. The house, the property behind our house was also purchased by the same LLC and turned into a short-term rental property. So we're sort of sandwiched in between these properties. So all of the folks on our street, we've all sort of come together and we're all terrified. You know, who's going to go next? What's the next domino that's going to fall? So I also want to point out the concept of property rights. I do think, you know, you should have the right to do what you want with your property within reason. However, if you're going to run a home business, this needs to be regulated as a home business. People do have home businesses, and that's fun, but there should be some regulation. I have a right as a property owner. I have a right to peace and quiet. I have a right to safety. I have a right to enjoy a profit when I decide to sell my home, and I have a right to build equity in that home. I can't think of anybody who would be jazzed about buying a house next to a bounty house. I can't see that happening. So when short-term rental owners talk about their rights, I would like for everyone here to think about the rights of the people in the neighborhood as well. We have property rights. And as Mr. Vincy pointed out, he's hired an attorney, probably because he has plenty of resources to do that, and that is something that myself and some of our neighbors have considered doing as well because we have rights that deserve to be protected. And then finally, I don't know the particulars, but hotels have to pay a bed tax. I wonder if a bed tax is being paid, and I wonder how much that would be when you're packing 17 people into a home. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, and I apologize for messing up your name. Okay, next would be Keith Brady. Keith, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address. We all have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Keith Brady from Keith Brady Law. Our primary address is 360 Central Avenue in St. Petersburg. We practice statewide, and all we do is vacation rental law, and we have offices throughout the state. I'm here representing 17 people and about 15 companies, and the number is growing. And I'm here to offer what I believe is likely a unique perspective, and that's that I am very much pro-regulation and pro-enforcement. My background includes that the current Florida corporations, the most comprehensive regulation in the state, was authored in part by myself. I'm one of the authors, so I know all about responsible regulations. The end result is we had no resistance to its passage because it was fair, comprehensive but fair. I was on the drafting committee for the model ordinance for the state. I was on the drafting committee for the legislation, and I strongly oppose the anti-regulation legislation that we saw as recently as this year in Tallahassee. I made a red-line version, which you all either have or I'll be glad to provide with you. It adds some regulations that you missed out on, but it gets rid of others. And the ones it gets rid of, they have to go because they're not enforceable. They'll leave you liable for a lawsuit under Chapter 509, which now, effective July 1st, includes attorney's fees. And the ones that, the parts that are enforceable, you still want to be mindful that you don't create liability under the Burt Harris Act because it hurt the property values. Our proposal looks after all of those interests of the city as well as the interests of my clients. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to address, please.
Please, ma'am.
Sir, could you come back to the podium?
Oh, sure.
Under what section of 509 are you filing a suit?
I don't plan on filing a suit.
Under what section of 509 do you say that attorney's fees and suit is even payable?
Well, I'll be glad to email it to you. It's a brand-new bill. It takes effect July 1st.
Under Chapter 509?
Yes. Attorney's fees under Chapter 509. It takes effect July 1st.
Do you agree that the city is able to actually do any regulation for vacation rentals?
More than you even proposed.
Okay. So is MAC occupancy one of those things they can actually?
It's one of the things you want to understand the nuance of what's happening with the Burt Harris view.
I'm very familiar with Burt Harris.
Okay.
But under 509, I'd like to know if you could email me where there's an actual lawsuit available.
Oh, sure. And just to give you a little something more on point, you're not allowed to enforce any of the, like, safety codes under the Florida Building Code.
Actually, yes, we are. Chapter 509 covers that.
The state fire marshals, I have a close relationship with them. You just call them on the phone.
A fire marshal is your neighbor.
He'll let you know that. State Fire Marshal, we just had this conversation in Sarasota. He'll, and he'll be more than glad to show you, and I'll be more than glad to point it out to you in writing.
I love you. You don't have a name.
There are regulations that I, I'm just trying to be cooperative. You know, I'll be glad to share every bit of information I have.
Michael Drogh, defending the state of his name, correct last name?
Drogh, if that's correct.
Mr. Drogh, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address. We all have three minutes, sir.
Mike Drogh, 124 11th Avenue South. I am in support of the current regulation as it is. I purchased my property two years ago. Within two weeks, there were stripper parties on Sunday nights. There were multiple calls to the police since then. I think what we need to focus on is, again, the regulation as written. The ordinance as written, which has been made available for many months and discussed at many public meetings, is in accordance with the current laws. I believe the city attorney had mentioned in the previous planning commission meeting how most of these clauses have been held up in other cities and they have withstood court. And I think if short-term rental owners are going to come up here and say how they're compliant, how they have pleasant renters, how they never have issues, then I don't see what the issue is with following along with these regulations. If they can be compliant, then we can pass this as it is. But all I hear about is delay, delay, delay. This has been available for many months, and something needs to be done. In addition, I'd just like to say that short-term rentals are counted as lodging establishments, and therefore, in the state of Florida, they have to follow many of these clauses as well. I believe the city attorney has mentioned that in previous planning commissions, meetings. And I just want to say that, reiterate, there's a reason why there's requirements for tax receipts in here. Now, it's also been mentioned that of the 400-plus estimated short-term rentals here in Jackson Beach, only eight have the proper tax receipts. So something needs to be done about that. Again, I'd just like to leave with, you know, it's affecting my street, my neighborhood, and if nothing's done, we're going to be a city of transience. I mean, nobody wants to. Thank you.
David Schoen. David, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address. We all have three minutes, sir.
I'm David Schoen. I live at 204 8th Avenue South, Jackson Beach. The basic question here to me is, what kind of city do we want Jacksonville Beach to be? Do we want it to be a city of neighborhoods, families, individual people, or do we want it to be a transient area where everybody doesn't know anybody, where the community does not exist as such other than people coming in and out every day? Short-term transits or short-term residents have no vested interest in the neighborhood. They have no vested interest in the safety of the neighborhood. They have no vested interest in how much noise they make. By the very nature of the fact that they're short-term, there's a party atmosphere. What about the children, as the first gentleman spoke about? Is anybody taking them into account? What type of community? While we're not getting to the basic problem here, what are we trying to do in Jacksonville Beach? I think it has come so far, I've been here 60 years, it has come so far in terms of building a community atmosphere to now where all I hear is, "I want to make money. I want to rent out my place. I don't care about the community," and that bothers me. The other thing is that I think that short-term rental does not help business. I think it's deleterious to business. I think it hurts the hotel industries for putting in foreign hotels. These people in short-term rentals cannot offer the services, the safety, nor the accountability that a hotel can. They're built for that. These are individuals who are trying to take advantage of the These are individuals who aren't trying to take advantage of the monetary aspects of the property of the short-term rental, but not facing other issues. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, gentlemen. Okay, Billy Carlyle. Billy, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
My name is Billy Carlyle, mayor, councilor. I live at 1810 Grove Street, on the north end of City, off of 18th Avenue and 15th Road. I was a police officer with the city of Jacksonville Beach for 30 years, retired. I'm currently working with the state attorney's office in Jacksonville. I'll just give you an example of a couple of my issues, just so you're informed. The house next door to me, 1806 Grove Street, is a rental. And the house is configured basically the way mine is, very small bedrooms, very small bathrooms. They, the owners have taken a two-car garage and converted it to, well, not really a conversion, they just put a bed in there and a television set, and they allow people to sleep in there. What, the several instances that I've had where I've had problems is that they rented the home to a group of motorcycle people. I assume it was around Bike Week, and they brought a bunch of motorcycles in. And just to give you an example of the way my house is configured, their house is a corner lot, and my house is next door. Their house is catty corner, which puts the backyard area where they come to get on a regular basis about 30 feet from my bedroom window. So, all I'm asking for is a little peace where I can sleep at night. That's all I want, is to be able to go to bed or sit in my living room and watch TV without being disturbed with the noise from next door. But these bikers, they were bringing the motorcycles, parking them in the backyard. Well, at night and at eight and hours, when they got ready to get home, they fired them up, they're loud, and they take off racing down the street. Another instance, the home was rented to a group of people, I think it was eight or nine people that stayed there over the weekend, and they were out drinking in the backyard. And where I'm standing at, and where I'm at in my home, I'm sitting there thinking, "Okay, gosh, if they don't be quiet by 11 o'clock, you know, then I'm going to have to go over there and say something." Well, 11:30, 11:45, they're still out there partying, drinking Corona's in the backyard, making a lot of noise, and I can't go to sleep. So, I have to, I either call the police, which they've got better things to do than to come answer these types of calls, because I know it, because I am a police officer. So, I took it on myself to walk over there and say something, going, "Look, hey, my bedroom's like literally right there where you're at. I mean, it's no further than from me to the corner of that wall there, and I'm trying to sleep." And they said, "So," you know, that was the response I got, "so," you know. So, that was a, that was a, an incident that I had, that all I'm asking for is a little bit of peace in my home. I've lived in the home since 1960, since I was six years old, and it's my family home, and I'm still there. And all I'm asking for is a little peace and quiet at night, and go to sleep, and enjoy my home to watch TV and be able to get a good, nice rest. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Billy. Appreciate it. Wally Sears. While, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
I'm Wally Sears. I live at 807 Second Street South in Jackson Beach. I'm an Airbnb owner, and I live next door to an Airbnb, and I use Airbnbs when I travel. So, I know Airbnbs. I'm against the ordinance as it's written. I think it's burdensome, cumbersome, and government-ruined. I've heard a lot about the safety issues. I don't think that Airbnb got some people you need to be worried about. I've had concert violinists, writers, filmmakers, Mayo patients, parents coming to their son's graduation, even a MIT student that's interning at Johnson &amp; Johnson, and a rock star from London. They're all great. As far as the nuisances, that's strictly a police thing. Just enforce the laws that are already on the books. I've had people loud before Airbnb, and they were just regular tenants, or regular owners having a party, called the police, and that's the end of it. At least with Airbnb, if there's a loud party, they're going to be gone in a few days. Just simply enforce the laws you have, there's not going to be a problem.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Strum, is it Strums?
Sterns.
Strums. Kathy, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Hi, I'm Kathy Sterns. 93 Second Street South. I bought that triplex 1993. Jacksonville Beach at the time was pretty lighted. I was a little bit surprised and naive to find all the crime and drugs that were going on in that short little area, that small little area, but things have changed. They really have. I've lived at the property, I don't currently now, I plan to move back, but that's a long time owning a property down here in Jacksonville Beach. I love the beach, I really do. I've had it as a long-term rental for years, until about two years ago. My daughter had the idea of converting it to short-term rental. She had used Airbnb quite a bit in her travels, and it was a good idea, it was a very good idea. I was able to make, make some changes when I converted it from long-term to the short-term. And I will say, in my opinion, and in my experience in owning this, it has been a lot easier to manage my property as a short-term rental than it was as a long-term rental. My long-term rental tenants, and I'm a property manager, I own, I have a real estate license, and I have been licensed for 20 years, and I do manage other people's properties as well. The long-term rentals, I had some good tenants, but for the most part, I found that people just kind of did what they wanted to. They brought animals in, a lot of animals. There were tenants who actually grew marijuana up in the attic of the home, and, you know, different things like that with the long-term rentals. It comes down to property management, and I feel like I'm a good property manager. With short-term rentals, I'm able to be there more often. I'm there every couple of days. And using Airbnb, the quality of the clients and guests that I've had have been great. I really have had a really good, I've met a lot of people, and I've had some really good guests, and I, my experience is that they have taken care of my property, and they have shown respect for the neighborhood. I don't allow a lot of people, I've managed property, I know what the rules are concerning occupancy, concerning parking. I make sure that I detail all of my listings, letting them know how many cars they can come. I give as much detail and as many rules to them so they understand what the house rules are. I ask them for their tag information and description of the car, to make sure I don't have more parking in that, in my parking spaces than is allowed. I haven't had any complaints from my neighbors in the last two years, and it's been a positive experience for me. I feel that, yeah, you do probably need to put some regulation into it for those who are taking advantage of it and having more people than they really should, but for the most part, I think it's a positive thing for Jacksonville Beach.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it. Bobby Welton. Bobby, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
All right. Well, I've been here before. My name is Bobby Welton. I live at 1032 First Street South in Jacksonville Beach, Beach. I came here because it's a beach, and I bought my place 11 years ago because it is at the beach, and it's a residential area. I don't want it turned into a commercial hotel area. The problem with this thing is, it's citywide, as I understand it. If this ordinance is passed, it's citywide. Is that correct?
Yes. It is everywhere where residential is allowed.
Oh, okay. Well, we have zones for commercial property where hotels are. This is not zoned for hotel motel.
State preempts our ability to use our zoning assistance.
I can't hear you.
The state is preempting our ability to use our zoning.
Okay, fine. Well, they can't, then it shouldn't be done anywhere. Let's get something straight here. All of Jackson Beach is a residential city. We have zoning areas, but it's a residential place. It is not Los Angeles. And secondly, we don't have any infrastructure to support motels from every block down here in Jackson Beach. There's no water, there's no toilet facilities, there's no parking, there's no bar, there's no convenience store, there's no gas station, anything. If you go past 5th South and go all the way to 36th, there's nothing to accommodate these people to bring in, 5, 10, 15, 20, 18. There's no, there's no reason for it. And then you put the burden on the police department, the trash collection, the fire department. At the last meeting, he said they were a year behind in checking on the verification of these BnBs, B and Breakers, whatever you want to call them. They're a year behind in verifying that these things are legit. That's what he said. And I can't believe that the city is promoting this. Why is the city promoting this?
Let's take a deep, hold on a second. Let's take a deep breath.
I don't need a deep breath. I'm upset about this.
I understand you're upset, but we can have decorum and be a gentleman.
I'm being decorum.
Well, don't point your finger at somebody. That's, that's, that's out of line.
Oh, Lord, okay. Well, then she, why is she with the city promoting this type of changing? Wait a minute. You can hit the wire.
We're going to call a five-minute recess. I'm going to reassemble a tent.
Well, then I'll take three more minutes.
Yield back your time. Yeah. All right. That was smart.[1315.41]
Bobby, I'm going to give you a warning. The warning is you're going to act like a gentleman, and I'm going to see some decorum, or I'm going to escort, have you escorted out. Okay? I understand you're emotional. Nobody hears that, Billy. You're the first person that's got upset. Keep it under control, and we'll let you finish, okay?
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'll contest. Look, Wendy, before you worry, we will give you your time. The city attorney is going to talk a little bit about the preemptions that were put on us by the state legislature, so you understand what we can't do. So go ahead.
Because I think you misunderstand that we're trying to promote vacation rentals. In fact, we cannot prevent them. The state has preempted our ability to stop short-term rentals, period.
In all residential areas?
All zoning everywhere. But that is the problem. That is all we're trying to address what we can with this. We cannot prevent them in any zoning district, anywhere where residential uses are allowed. We have to allow homeowners to rent their property out, and we cannot prohibit them. We cannot regulate their duration of frequency. That's the problem. So this is not intended to promote. It's intended to regulate.
Right. Let me ask you the question. Is the city capable of establishing ordinances or regulations regarding who, what, when, how they're justified or controlled or monitored or up to the regulations of a motel, hotel room? Can the city do any of that?
We may not. What we begin to do is what's in this ordinance. We may not do what the Department of Health does for motels, hotels, and others. We are given life safety codes and Florida building codes, and that's what 509 allows us to regulate to, and that's what we've tried to do here.
Can the city alter 509, or does it have to be only judged by the state?
That requires a legislature in Tallahassee to change.
So you're saying that our, my residence is being controlled by the state?
Yes, sir. And this has to be.
Oh, wait, I don't like that word.
Well, I think that's sad, and that is a sad epitaph on the privacy and the residence of the state of Florida. I'm just hitting my highlights again because this is horrible.
All right, one second. So just to be clear, so I've asked our city attorney numerous times. She has written this ordinance as strict as the city believes they can legally defend in court to control short-term rentals. So this, the current ordinance, as strict as we feel we can legally regulate short-term rentals. So as written, we are, this is as strong as we can make it. The problem that you have is at the state level where up until 2014, there was a brief time where we were not allowed to have any control. It was completely preempted, to where we cannot, we couldn't establish any ordinance. Now, we can only, we cannot deny them, we can't ban them, and we cannot, we can't regulate their duration and frequency. Everything else, we have the ability to look at and create an ordinance. But I mean, I understand where you're coming from and the challenges with it, but it is a statewide problem that has been, is happening at a state level. The problem is not, your problem is not locally with us, it's at the state level.
I'd like to piggyback on that as well. There's a home rule initiative that all the mayors in most of the cities are working to establish, a constant effort to keep legislators on track. Many bills this session started with prohibit cities from, and then fill in the blank. So this is, the best we can do is put this together now, and there's no telling, Bobby, they may pull this next year.
They what?
They may put a, they had an ordinance on the books, or a law on the books, that was going through the Senate Appropriation Bill that would have taken away the grandfather's in the Atlantic Neptune Beach and stopped our ability even do this right now. But it was TP, it was temporarily postponed. It'll be back next year, and we'll be fighting it with the state next year.
Ken, is there any group or movement amongst the smaller cities, could be the big ones too, to organize the mayors, or the councils, or the county people, whatever, in order to band together and try to prevent this from destroying the residential nature of Florida?
I mean, our mayor went to Tallahassee and tried to work with, tried to work with them at that level to establish the home rule and to make sure that it didn't get passed to where we're completely preempted and the grandfather did not get at, the removal of grandfather didn't get added. So that's why, he's one of the reasons that it got temporarily postponed.
Well, the other thing is, thank you, but there's a group on the west coast called the Big C, and they're a group of small coastal towns that have worked together to try and come together with louder voice. I went out and met with them last year to see if we could start a similar organization or add on to the Big C, rename it, and get both coast under control. Right now, I may be percentage too often, a number too often in the counties, but eighty-four percent of the Airbnb's or the short-term rentals are in fifteen counties. We have sixty-eight counties in Florida.
And I'm sure all of them are one of the lowest populated counties.
Well, they're all coastal counties. They're in Disney, are the biggest areas. And one last thing, now that we're all calm and talking like friends, you know, what we're hoping to accomplish here is to set guidelines in place so that we can control the bad actors. We're not out to take your money, we're not out to make this difficult for current, short-term rental folks. What we hope to accomplish is putting standards in place that allow us to come in and keep things under control. The first gentleman that spoke tonight, Matt Lane.
I heard it. It's horrible.
You know, he's called me, we called a town hall meeting, we had Senator Bean and Representative Verdon here with several of his neighbors, explaining to them why this was so difficult because the lobby right now is working on all these counties that don't have the vested interest in the short-term rentals. So it's hard to counteract a lot. There's a huge Airbnb lobby that's working to get the legislators that aren't in the affected counties.
It's the commercial entity of these people's interests that is doing this, not the residents. The residents just want to live here.
That's why, I understand that.
Are we still hearing both sides? Because it seems like just your side.
Yeah, let's wrap yours up.
Well, I feel like, and I didn't come here, I'm an excitable person when something really affects me and hurts me. I'm going to fight it till I'm dead. That's why I'm upset about this. And this is not good for me. So I'm going to say.
For you.
I'm not leaving here anytime soon. Okay, here's the deal. The city cannot support the infusion of all of these people throughout the entire city because of the police, the trash, the sewage, the parking, all of this. The city can't support it. Neither can the fire department to keep up with it. So that is a problem. And this is a residential city. It is not a commercial city. And the thing, we've got to adhere to a twenty-one-page ordinance and doing this 509 thing. Do we have to be a lawyer just to live in our house? This is crazy. I think this is pathetic. I've got a whole thing here I could read to you, but you've heard from most of the people. But if this is allowed to happen, it will forever change the character of Jacksonville Beach.
Thank you, sir.
Period. And that's a shame.
Thank you. Okay, Lorraine, Kenny, Lorraine, if you'll come forward.
You already heard from me. Thank you. Came up with him.
You just put in separate calls.
Yeah. Well, I missed. We're married.
I have these all ordinance, too.
I'll let someone else speak. Thank you.
Tommy Tam. Tom, if you come forward and give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Lake. My name's Tommy Tam, and I'm a new resident and taxpayer of the city of Jacksonville Beach as of March two thousand nineteen. I am here today to commend the council for initiating this legislation process, as I'm actually extremely supportive of reasonable rules and regulation for this fast-growing shared economy industry that's growing. However, I'm in opposition to the ordinance as written, as I feel it's very restrictive, redundant, and a bit unreasonable. I grew up in Jackson Beach in the nineteen seventies and the eighties, and I relocated four years ago. My family used to own the Chinese restaurant called Pagoda.
Pagoda.
Not in the east, but south.
Wishy Pork.
Yeah. But we still have a restaurant over in Day Meadows, and I come back to help my parents. They're getting older. My father survived a triple bypass surgery about a year ago, and I've undertaken property management for an apartment complex that we still own that's behind the old restaurant. And for over twenty-five years, we've had it managed by Watson Realty, and I noticed that our long-term tenants weren't really taking care, and they didn't really upkeep the units that they were renting. So last year, I had an idea to convert one of the units into a short-term rental. I was actually going to move into it myself. I decided not to, and since then, I've hosted over two hundred and fifty-plus guests, and I became a super host in record time, six months. And then the income that I've been able to generate, I've invested every dime in the property. I've upgraded it after forty-plus years, and I even have my neighbors as guests. And then the revenue that I've generated has allowed me to buy my best friend's home, which is across the street from the old restaurant. And that property's been dilapidated, it was condemned, hadn't been occupied for over two years, there was no running water or electricity. And I see that, I understand both sides of things, and I just wanted to come here and stress that I think that layering more bureaucracy isn't the solution. I think that we can look at the positives and negatives of short-term rentals versus long-term renters, and just have a bigger, step back and have a bigger vision and view a bigger picture of where we want to take Jackson Beach. Because I moved here specifically not to become a resident, I fell in love with the city again, and that's why I'm here, and I wanted to share my voice and opinion today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Welcome on.
Thank you.
Katie Mellon, Mellon? Katie, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
I've got a Canton Airbnb reservation. Seriously. My name is Katie Mellon, and I live at eighteen twenty-three Oak Road Circle, Jacksonville Beach, and I am a hundred percent for regulations, and I believe that the integrity of our neighborhood, or what we believe it is, the older man, maybe my age, that was sitting back here a minute ago, said, what are we, who are we going, trying to be? And I feel that we are trying to be Daytona Beach, or that's what we're slowly becoming is Daytona Beach. As we continue to move in Airbnb's and let our neighborhoods go, because that is what we're doing, we're losing our community, we jeopardize our schools because eventually we won't have kids to go to our local schools because they will be Airbnb's everywhere. We have one right next door to us. Some days, it's great. We never see them, we never have a barbecue with them, we never go outside and go, hey, you want to go up to the bar and get on our bikes and go together? We don't do anything with our Airbnb people because they're not our neighbors. They're the people that live next door for three days. Sometimes they're out back swimming in the pool, some days they're out outside smoking pot, sometimes they're just doing whatever they do. Sometimes they're going to church in the morning because they wake up and we see them dressed up, but mostly, they are here to have a great time for three days. They put stuff in our trash that is pretty smelly and stinky, and it can stay there for four days until it finally gets rolled out to the dumpster and to the end of the street. We've called the police numerous times because of them being up until three o'clock in the morning. We don't feel that it is something that builds our integrity for our community, it doesn't build a neighborhood. It can, because now, as you just said, we don't have a choice. It's going to happen whether we want it to or not. So what are we afraid of by making regulations? Why are we afraid? Is it greed? Are we saying, because we're kind of lying to ourselves to say, if we, we don't need regulations, it's fine, let's just go. Because if we don't, then once again, we're Jacksonville Beach behind the times and not in front of the times. So let's speak up and be in front of it, and let's do what's right for the community and not be greedy and do something that's going to jeopardize our people. And I am one of those people, and we're a citizen, my family, my kids. We taught mission parking, we said something about parking. Well, when ten kids are out there on playing in the street, playing ball, and there's parking all over the place, and there's seventeen cars, how would you let your kids go outside and go play? And how would you feel comfortable that your kids are outside and you don't know your neighbors? We don't know them. They're there for three days. So let's make some regulations, let's build some safety nets, let's build something that protects the citizens, because that's who we are, and make us safe and make both sides, because that's what it is, both people, neighbors and Airbnb's, in short term, somebody's going to be punished. Somebody's going to be suffering from it, and so let's try to make it come together and do something that's safe for everybody. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Appreciate it. Tess Walter? Tess, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name's Tess Walter, and my address is ten thirty, Fourth Street North. I am here because I am an employee for Welcome Home Rentals, and we have three homes in Jacksonville Beach. As someone who lives locally, the safety of our neighborhoods and quality of our beach is very important to me. And to ensure our guests are meeting our own strict standards and policies, we provide them with a contract in which they review and sign ahead of time. To further enforce these, we personally meet and greet every guest to make sure they are aware and abiding by them. In my year and a half of meeting and greeting the guests at our homes, the majority of them are families and people traveling for business. I've had one incident upon meeting the guests and discovered that they were under the age of twenty-five. I informed them that due to our strict policy of not renting to anyone under the age of twenty-five, then unfortunately, we could not rent the home to them, and they had to find other accommodations at their cost. As someone who loves and enjoys the beach and its activities, I am grateful and proud to live here and want to continue to see it as a safe and clean place while giving the opportunity for other people to experience all it has to offer. I realize there are a range of opinions regarding guests in a neighborhood, and I respect that. However, I live here also and respect and love this beach. The safety of my own backyard and that of your families is of the highest importance, and I will never tolerate some of the behavior that has been incorrectly reported. Thank you.
Thank you, Tess. Appreciate it. Lori Watson? Lori, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Lori Watson. My address is one eighty-five Fourth Avenue South. I do have probably, I think, the only bed and breakfast, licensed bed and breakfast out at the beach. It's not licensed as an Airbnb, as we went back and forth on that with the state. I am regulated. I see Steve at least once a year, if not twice. I do have all of the health inspections, I've got the proper licensing, the proper insurance. I do think that we need some regulations of the short-term rentals. I do think that the way that it is currently written, it's a little excessive. However, if we do adopt something, I encourage you to have more of a workshop where the owners can come and understand what is expected, what licensing is expected, because just sitting and listening, it's amazing to me of the misinformation out there of actually what license we have to have, the tax receipts, I have all of those, I pay all my taxes. So I would just encourage you to have a workshop where people can come ask questions, get the answers that they need, and get the correct information and not have to just have it trickle down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tess. Appreciate it. One thing, I want to make a clarification before we take the next person. Somebody made a comment about you being a year behind in inspections. That is not true, right?
That's not true.
No, it's not.
Steve Chata, Jacksonville Beach Fire Department, Fire Marshal for the beach. The way our inspection process runs, presently, we do inspections, we try to get all our inspections in the two-year period. We have high-hazard inspections, and then the other inspections, and we meet right around that two-year period. I think the confusion came in when we were asked about this last meeting, is if I get four hundred of these things at one time, that initial surge will back us up because you've got four hundred of them in there. These would be simple inspections, do check the smoke detectors to make sure there's fire exposure, very easy on these individuals. Now, there's no reason why they couldn't call us now when we start doing these inspections. It's not going to be painful for them. The unit that has put a bed in the garage, though, you know, that one would not, that would not be compliant because you could have an escape if there's a fire, you've got other things. But ninety-nine for some of these owners, the fireside is not an issue for, and I encourage them now to go ahead and make their inspections. We don't issue fines off the bed and things. The city's philosophy is, let's make it right and safe for everybody. That's a concern, it's not, not the other stuff. But we are on schedule with our inspections. It's just that initial dump at four hundred at one time, that will put us backwards.
Put in a little line, Steve. Yes, thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Shandy Thompson. Shandy, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Shandy Thompson. I live at five point two Third Avenue.
Hello, my name's Shandy Thompson, I live at 523rd Avenue South, Jacksonville Beach, Florida, 32250. I put down, I'm against this. I'm against this for actually none of the reasons anyone spoke. I am not an Airbnb owner, I'm a homeowner. But everyone that's complaining about stuff literally sounds like Tuesday through Sunday in my neighborhood. We have a problem even with long-term rentals. I would like to see this expanded if you're going to do that. Where if cops get called at the college house down the street, they know who to call. Not saying, "Hey, 12 kids are completely wasted." Parking's an issue everywhere, not just in these few Airbnbs. I just feel this is more of a beach issue than just a short-term rental issue, in my opinion. So I think even opening up the code and seeing what we can do to fix that to alleviate even future problems for homeowners or even hotels or whatever else is going to come here, businesses, like, I just feel there's... This is just so much just for short-term rentals when there's so many other things that are affected by this that could be passed on or down the chain or whatever. I do see pros and cons from both sides, so I'm empathetic with both parties. As someone who lives by a bunch of renters, long-term, I will say the few Airbnbs are much better kept than the long-term renters. I don't see liquor bottles in their yards, I don't see toilet paper off their roof. Just little things. Granted, I do understand, I live right outside of downtown, I live anywhere by the college kids. I'm accepting of that. And someone told me when I was running, "That's where you live and you have to accept it." So I just think we can work together. I'm not truly opposed of some of these regulations, I just think that some of these can be distributed even further to long-term renters. Thanks.
Thank you, Shandy. Evan Greenfield, Evan, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Evan Greenfield, I live at 1800 The Greensway, Unit 208. Mayor, if I may reiterate, we're all friends, we're all neighbors. Guys, let's get along. There's arguments on both sides of this. I'm in support of our regulation, just not how this one is written. And I really would like to thank everybody for their time. I'd like to thank the mayor and all the council for their time that they put into coming here today, and sitting for hours for meetings, all the emails you've gotten, to read through them. And thank you for taking the time to read each one and hear all of these comments. I'd also like to thank the city attorney. Ms. May, thank you for putting all the time into this to write the ordinance to make our city better. Thank you. And to Matt, if he's still here, I'm sorry for all of that noise, I wouldn't want to live there either. But today, I was really hoping that we would use this workshop to talk about tactics and make suggestions to how we can deal with this blessing. We... This is a blessing because everybody wants to live here. The traffic, this is a desirable place to live, we're going to have to deal with this. And it's truly great for economic development. I'd also like to say that the... All the reasons for regulation I've heard are for noise, parking, and trash. I don't think that we are effectively using, and I'm sorry if I reiterate other points that have already been made, but I'd like to offer some tactics. Let's invest in some tow trucks or get better contracts with towing companies, parking becomes an issue. Let's employ more officers to issue citations. And let's strictly enforce noise ordinances and trash hours. Without that, the problem won't persist. I think short-term rentals get a bad rap as being all vacation rentals. But as you've heard before, there's other reasons for short-term rentals. Just to name a few, hospital care, Navy, and the like. The goal of this workshop, I think that we're trying to do, but I would implore you to tell us your goals and our goals. And the community's goal is to, what I think it is, is to have permanent residents enjoy their property and to have economic prosperity created and taxes collected. If it can't be enforced, it can't be effective. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Bill Hilligus, Bill, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Bill Hilligus, 3739 D Ball Drive. My wife does own some short-term rentals, so if you want to know what side of the street I'm on. I agree with the last guy when he said, "Just try to come up with some good ideas, try to figure this out." Because as Shandy pointed out, he doesn't have issues with the short-term rentals, she got issues with the long-term rentals. And I don't know if we've really come up with a good game plan. But in line with trying to offer ideas, I'm suggesting we really put some hefty fines on those guys who repeat offenders. That first guy was up here to start hitting that owner, making that owner get more involved and running his business in a more enjoyable way. The other thing I might suggest is, you know, we charge higher fees to be able to hire some enforcement officers to try and get better enforcement of the rules we're trying to enforce. Another problem I do have is that you're trying to... Sounds like parties are like the biggest problem they have out there. We have a family Thanksgiving that 100 people come to our party. We caused chaos that entire day, I know. I hope you guys don't extend this into non-DRVO type of stuff, but that's a real issue. We live on a street that has a lot of construction. We have construction cars up and down the street. And you're trying to get around here and they're parking in the block and you drive away. So these issues are not just limited to short-term rentals. I implore you to give some thought to expanding the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate it. And Evan Rocha?
Yes, sir. Got it right there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Evan, good to see you, come on up.
Good to see you.
Give us your name and address, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Take five.
I didn't do my own math.
Evan Wright, 729 Sixth Avenue South. A lot of great points on both sides, guys. You know, it's very obvious we have an issue, we have to deal with it. I just, you know, I want to implore both sides to please, please look at across the aisle. I know that's difficult to do when you have someone partying and you're next door or whatever. But I'm just going to make a couple of points and hopefully, my hope is that we can move this to a more cohesive workshop. And that's not to discount this workshop, this was great. I just think we need the workshop with the tables, where the residents and the short-term rental owners work together because there's a big divide. I think residents think that Airbnb owners are, you know, these, you know, money-making, just, you know, I think they forget that they are also members of the community and, you know, they do want what's good for the property because they have invested interest in that. So anyway, let's not... Let's remember 10 years ago when, you know, this, there was a lot of properties that were desolate and there was bums living in them and it was just, it was pretty bad. I think Airbnb helped clean up a lot of that and helped clean up the hill. You know, us alone in our properties, we invested a half a million dollars to come within compliance of Airbnb. And what was there was long-term renters and, I mean, it was just, it was filthy. We returned moldy, nasty, you know, units that were just, I mean, people shouldn't have been living in them. We turned them into these beautiful, you know, we have a 4.9 Airbnb rating. Let's also not forget that we are a public beach. All due respect, there is other more private beaches where that whole neighborhood thing that you guys are thinking of is there. You know, this is more public, this is a, this is everyone's beach. I think it's important to remember that you own what's in between the four posts of your house, the four corners of your house. With all due respect to the residents, you know, and again, this is with all due respect, so don't hate me. But please stop trying to dictate what we do between our four corners, it's not fair. This is not a homeowner association area, this is a public, you know, beach. These bad actors, I'm telling you guys right now, there's no way they're Airbnb because Airbnb is psycho, their Airbnb support, or, yeah, the support system, they would come and shut those units down. And all you have to do is call and they will shut those houses that are having issues down. Okay? In my opinion, this should be a one-page regulation. List the phone numbers of the people that own these properties. Because I know if somebody called me and said, "Hey, you know, there's a party at the place," we have six units and four and a half years have never had one issue. Not one time police called or anything, okay? So you're painting with a broad brush, you're telling me I'm doing something wrong because one guy somewhere else is doing something wrong. That's not fair. I think we should list the phone numbers, restrict, yes, sir. Restrict to 150 square feet per person, I think that's fair, okay? Tax these things and figure out that a fair parking ratio and I think you'll have everybody on the same team with that, so.
Thanks, Evan, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Paul Segal. Paul, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, council members, my name is Paul Segal, I'm with XPD Group. XPD Group has HomeAway and VRVO as part of our family of brands. I'm the Government Affairs Manager for the Southeast Region, I live just outside of Orlando. But here they talk about a couple of things and it may surprise you to find that we are actually in favor of a lot of things that are in the cities. That we want there to be a robust vacation rental market, but I think people need to play by the rules. And so I think that owners definitely should be registered. I think there should be a point of contact posted inside the home so that neighbors and others can know who to call. I think that, as the last owner just said, if an owner is called when there's a problem, they will be there quickly because this is an investment that they care about. The one who buys a home that rented on one of our sites wants there to be a massive kid party in their house that families are investing. Nobody wants that. And so if it's found that that breaks out, I'm pretty sure the owner would be there to solve that problem. The ordinance ought to be effective. A couple of things in here that are problematic. What we found are that ordinances in cities that get the highest rate of compliance are ones that are simple and easy for owners to understand, they're affordable. And they can be done either online quickly or in one stop if they have to come down to your city hall. So things like requiring a site sketch, which most owners may not have, or an interior sketch, are things that will cause delay. And if you cause delay, you will cause non-compliance. So I think the easier you make these things for owners to get registered, the more you will comply. And for the city and for neighbors, you want registration so you can do a couple of things. You can get your hands around a number of rentals that exist in the city. You can create a scheme in which at a certain number of verified complaints, someone could lose their license. And then the fines kick in if you are caught renting without a license. So I think it's in the city's best interest to make ordinances effective, fair, and enforceable. I think there are some issues in the five or six pages of warehouse clauses that are, in some cases, up to interpretation, some are pure opinion, and some have been found by courts to not be true. Specifically in that the use of vacation rentals and short-term rentals is still residential in nature, is not commercial, regardless of whether money changes hands. And that is found with the First District Court here in Florida, in the case of San Monica Beach. The court found that no matter what happens, whether or not money changes hands, the use of the property is still residential. So I think there's some issues in some of these warehouse clauses. But again, as the platform, I would love to be a resource. If a couple of people talked about a more robust workshop, please use us as a sounding board to ask questions, to ask, "How are they doing this in Louisville, Kentucky or somewhere else?" We've had experiences in this, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Paul, your information's on the card and I'll make sure that that goes to City Attorney so she can reach out if she has any questions. Real quick?
Real quick. First of all, Denise, what is the maximum penalty we can impose on somebody that violates these rules? And secondly, you mentioned that we could take away the person's right to be able to do it if they don't comply, and I don't think that's the case. And that still goes back to us not being able to abandon them.
That's correct. And what we're proposing here are using Chapter 162, which is very well-setted law under special magistrate if they're found. And in venue fines, the fines under Chapter 162 allow up to $250 per offense, $500 for repeat offense. We don't start looking at trying to really come to other civil remedies, which would include injunction or other civil remedies until you reach about four or five offenses. And what we focus on in this ordinance really is not so much not being in compliance, although we could look at that, that's something the council wants to. But what we do focus on is violations of max occupancy. I thought that was the direction of, you know, we really want to be looking at how many people are in these homes and kind of reducing the impact on residences based on that. So what we use is Chapter 162. It's straight up going to be special magistrate, it's going to be $250 for first offense, $500 for repeat offenses. And we start looking at other injunction or civil reactions beyond 456, but no, we cannot stop it.
Just for the sake of verification, it's almost 7:30, this was set up at a time of certain meeting. Does the council want to continue beyond 7:30? I've got, we just finished the cards of the people who had designated support or opposition. And I've got a stack of cards of people who didn't write, if they were support or opposition. And I've got a small stack of two of people who didn't want to speak to the council but wanted to vocalize their support or opposition. So do you want to keep going?
Most of the opinions are, you know, are... We're repeating the same thing over again. If we want to go and stay and talk, can we reduce the talking to three minutes down to a minute and a half?
Well, what I'd like to do, what I would propose that we do is, the overall objective here is is when we're done with the folks and giving them an opportunity to speak, taking a few minutes, giving some direction to our attorney. So do we want to do that now or do we want to keep going with the, you know? I need a motion either way.
I would like people to stay. Get to the count, I want to know.
Do I have a second? All in favor, please signify by a percentage of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, by your actual, continue. Julie Mousrin, Julie, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
I'm here. Julie Mousrin, 2042 Second Street South, Jacksonville. I've lived in this town.
Julie, do you have that microphone there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
2042 Second Street South, Jacksonville. I've lived in my townhouse 25 years, I've lived in the area 36 years. And I don't think it was that bad in 2009, that maybe up the street. I am blessed with the people that are next to me that have an Airbnb but are regulating it very well. Keep them, you know, very, very, I'm at a problem. We've had a little discussion here and there, it's all been real well, they're very fastidious and spoken already today. So I'm blessed with that, I'm lucky. I see the trend in further south though. And I was shocked to hear how many properties were Airbnb's. We always had vacation rentals, but we never...
We're losing our shot in Brooklyn.
Yeah. We always had vacation rentals before, down the condos, and that was, you know, after year or whatever, snowbirds, and there was a problem. And now all of a sudden, the traffic has just gotten... I got in an accident half a block from my house. Yes, two days ago. And the police there overworked here. Took a while to get anybody out, it was a minor accident, but it was just to get anyone out here. And that concerned the traffic and the hotels and, oh my gosh. So I don't, I'm not for or against, I am for regulation. I'm not against the idea of the Airbnb or short-term rentals. But I have definite regulation. And I haven't read the whole, is what some people are objecting to, but I do think they had so many per bathroom, which made sense, like about maybe six people in the townhouses that I live in. I don't know exactly how that worked out, the police said so many people per bathroom. But it sounded reasonable, that part of it. And as far as the other codes and all, I haven't gotten definitely. So the other problem though, I have a friend that's moved down here from Maryland, she retired about five years ago, she loves it here, she wants to live here, but she can't, she wants to just rent. She can't really go buy again, so for previous buying history. She's had to move by five times, and one of the last times because she couldn't find her rental because they were, she turned the place they do at Airbnb. Decided they could make more money doing that, and she was paying 1,500 plus in rent for a two-bedroom place. And, you know, that's kind of bad, but she's a really, she's a really good contributor to the community, active with animals and other group causes. And she's going to stay, she's not one of those people that's just coming and going. And that, you know, just one other thing to bring up. I just, like I said, I have a very mixed feeling about it. I am lucky with the people, with the folks that are next to me. But I sure as heck don't want to be, if somebody complains one day that I look grouchy, that I get all of a sudden get, somehow I notice that I'm affecting their rating either because maybe a five-star rating or whatever they, I don't understand all this stuff. I think we all need to understand this Airbnb rating stuff better and how it's all, because it's really hard to find out about. And I think education would help a lot of people that are having these discussions. And that's basically all I want to say, aye?
Thanks, Julie, appreciate it. Jeanne Rothwell. Jeanne, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes. If we can do it faster than three, there'll be seven people.
Challenge accepted. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, thank you for the floor today. My name is Jeanne Rothwell, I live at 1420 Pine Wood Grove in Jacksonville Beach. And I'm also the Director of the Convention Sales Services in Jacksonville. And I'm here on behalf of that organization today. As you know, not only do we support tourism, we support bedt tax revenue. As you know, not only do we support tourism, we support bed tax revenue. And my comment today really is clarification on Section 3 of the ordinance, specifically B in Section 3, number four, obtaining a Florida Department of Revenue certificate of registration for purposes of collecting and levying tourist development taxes, sales surtaxes, and transient rental taxes. Just clarifying that the Department of Revenue does not collect bed tax. That's done through the Duval County Tax Collector's Office. And so, we would be hopeful that a clarification could be written into the ordinance.
We certainly understand that. What we do mean is you get your Department of Revenue certificate. It's required by EDPR when you go to register as your vacation rental, short-term, they're going to require that same DOR certificate. So, if it's the language in there that offends you, I'm certainly, we can look at the language of it, but certainly means go get your proof of registration and certification with the Department of Revenue that shows you're showing paying your sales taxes.
Sure.
DBPR is the one who requires it.
Sure. Our recommendation would be that they would also be required to fill out the tourist convention development tax registration form. This would provide a filter between the City of Jacksonville and Jacksonville Beach City Council, or city. That way, it would be a greater expansive accountability for who's paying taxes and who's not. If you don't do that and if they don't pay, or if they don't fill out that form, all they have is their business registration form, therefore, we won't know who is paying bed tax, who isn't. This would also create a fair playing field for hotels, camps, short-term rentals.
Certainly. If you want to email me at dmay@monksgrave, can you hear that?
I can. I'll find you.
No, I can give you a card as well.
Perfect.
As to that, I don't know that it's squared for 509. I will check with that. Again, all we try to require here is what's already required when they register with the UPR. In other words, I want to see that you've gone to the Department of Revenue and gotten your sales tax certificate up. And that's required by DBPR in order to register your vacation rental.
Sure.
And then you bring that to us. I also want to see that you've gone to the county. If you think there's another step in there that we can cover for tourist development tax, I think we'd be all for that.
We do recommend that, and I'll have our CEO, President Michael Corrigan, for Duval County Tax Collector.
We all know that.
That would be wonderful. Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. But you don't want our money.
Yes.
Okay, Heather Henderson. Heather, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes, man. Sooner the better.
Okay. I'm Heather Henderson, and I live on 1815 Eighth Street North. Single residential home. I know now that suddenly we have SDRs, we're going to have them, and a lot of the people that came, I definitely support how Denise wrote the ordinance. We have to have, I mean, we didn't, we don't even know how many short-term rentals are in Jackson Beach. There's no accountability really to find out who has one and who doesn't. And a lot of these people who came out to speak that have them, they're saying how they do everything so wonderful, but there have been problems at my home now, right across the street from me, with one that just started. So, it needs to be regulated, and really, it is a commercial lodging facility. It's not someone's home. And a lot of these LLCs are a bunch of people, let's face it, that own it together and that have them all over the place. And some are just, you know, a person that just has one other property, and they're just using this for extra income, but that's not the case. And we do need regulations, and these people are saying, "Oh, it's too much, it's too much." I'm sure there's lots that are not paying the sales tax, and they need to. It is a commercial business. Even though it's so residential now, it's become a commercial business, and so, they need to be paying the fees. I mean, here the police are getting called out all the time. I haven't called the police, but now I may start to because I didn't want to, you know, go over all the other work just because there's all these people parking, because they're having some kind of party there for the weekend. So, this one house in particular, and I think it's the same woman on 10th Street North talked about, that is the problem where we are. So, not everyone is being, taking care of their short-term rentals like they're supposed to be, and we need to work, and we have to be in, you know, work together in harmony since we are, do have to have them by the state. But we need to have some kind of regulations and accountability for these people that are running these. And not all of them are just single owners that just have one. A lot of them are big conglomerates of people. We heard some of them come up here, men from Fort Lauderdale and so forth. So, it's big money, and they can afford to make it safe. We need it safe for the people that are coming and staying there, and also for the neighborhood and the community. And, you know, I have my granddaughter over all the time. Whatever, it's just, we need to find a solution. I'm so thankful you guys are doing something, and I hope it can be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Kent Ammons, Ammons, is that right? Kent, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Kent Ammons. I live at 930 10th Street North. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and make the floor. I was a little bit misled by the title of this being a workshop. This feels very much like one side against the next, just like the last one. I thought it was going to be a little bit more open format to where we could communicate actual solutions, but, and it turns out that three minutes, I don't believe is sufficient to address 21 pages. But that being said, again, I appreciate it. I have emailed everybody up here. My personal story, we won't go there again, but I do, I'm an individual, I own one property, and I Airbnb it. When I bought the property, it had been vacant for two years, dilapidated, and a squatter living in the garage. The neighbor on the very first day that I started renovations came out thinking personally that we were doing something with this rundown, beat-up property. Now, I've been, I'm part of a group here that is, that has developed a, and I also want to thank those of you who responded. It shows that you really care what both sides have to say. Now, again, it kind of feels like we're very much one side versus the next, and there's not a whole lot of gray area in the middle. And I'm pretty sure that there's nothing one side can say to the other to make them go and come over to the other side. I'm quite certain about that, no matter which way you want to go. But I'm here to ask that we take a look at the citizens' proposal that most of you have already had access to, in hopes that we can perhaps find some middle ground, because what has been proposed is just, I believe, excessive and overreached. So, if we can please start just maybe on a more level playing field or some middle ground to where it doesn't seem so slanted in one direction. I get it, I live here. I don't want parties at my Airbnb. I don't want payers, I don't want, I got occupied, I got occupancy for five people. I don't want any more than that. I don't want 20 people coming in. I don't want that either. So, but I'm here to ask for some, an opportunity to interact and to actually exchange information and to collaborate and work with you guys to develop something that can work for both sides, because I don't think anybody's going to be happy with what's going on, or not anybody, but you get what I'm trying to say. I'd just like an opportunity to collaborate, both sides.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Cody Monroe. Cody, if you use your name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Cody Monroe, 502 Fifth Avenue South. I'm an active duty naval officer and an experienced short-term vacation rental host. To date, I've had the distinct pleasure of hosting guests who hail from destinations all over the world, locations that include every continent except Antarctica. I'd like to start by thanking the members of this council. It's clear that a lot of thought and effort was put into drafting a document that promotes a common sense hosting requirements, guest safety, and respect for neighbors. After studying the proposed regulations and comparing them to those found in other cities, I think that the council has drafted some of the most common sense requirements I've seen anywhere in the country. I think we're probably close to a final document that can stand for years to come. With that, I do think there's some specific areas where the proposals can be significantly improved. The first thing I noticed in the proposal was a requirement for three-story structures in particular to be equipped with a automatic fire sprinkler system. For structures that don't have that already, and with guests that are already providing a very safe and healthy environment for guests, this would be very expensive to install, it would overburden some, in my opinion. I think the same safety objectives can probably be completed with simple portable fire extinguisher devices located either in each major room, or at least one on each level of the home that can be commonly accessed in a common area. The next item I think she needs adjustment is the use of the full air-conditioned bathroom as the metric by which maximum occupancy is calculated. I think it's rather arbitrary. I don't know where it came from. As we all know, more modern construction of homes tends to include more bathrooms. People these days like to have lots of bathrooms. Older floor plans, maybe three or four bedrooms, but only contain one full bathroom. That's how it used to be back then. So, I think that there are more logical metrics that can be employed in order to calculate maximum occupancy, namely simply using square footage. Let's make sure there's enough physical space in the unit or the number of guests that are allowed to stay there. I think that's the best metric. Finally, I think taking down the names and ages of every single occupant, taking down all of their license plates, is really more of an administrative burden than a value-add item. You know, when people come here to visit friends and family, you know, it's not necessarily clear at any given time who's going to be staying in the home, so I think it'd probably be best to remove that requirement. Those are the major things that I saw in the document. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for producing what I consider to be a very well-thought-out document. I think we're close to something that works and that we can set a good example for the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Dennis Hanks, Dennis, if you come forward and give us your name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have a lot. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question of the Fire Marshal about the requirement for the sprinklers for the three-story buildings. Could you explain that, please?
Sorry, Dennis, if you'd just say.
Steve Schott, a Jackson Beach Fire Marshal. That's right out of 509, the requirement for that.
So, currently required by the state?
509 in there, it's right out of that document.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, sorry for the brief interruption.
No problem. I'm here for the duration.
Hold on a second. Go ahead.
One more for the Fire Marshal. In 509, is that a requirement for new construction or existing?
No, that's existing. That's with the change of occupancy for vacation. If it's a vacation rental, it's supposed to have it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Dennis?
Dennis Hanks, Board of Vacation Mental Management Association. Thank you for having us here again tonight. And just to continue on some of the conversations, really dovetailing on what you just asked the chief here about some of those things. The ordinance, we don't mind ordinances. Regulations are great when they're fair. A lot of this stuff is already in 509, as you just asked those questions. It's redundant to 509. Many people probably don't even understand that there's already a registration, license, and inspection process in 509 through DBPR. So, if anyone has a residential unit that's in violation, call in and see if they have a license on them and turn them in, because that's probably the first step. If they don't have a state license, they're probably a bad actor, and they're not doing it correctly anyways. You can do that online, punch in the address on DBPR's website, it'll come up whether they have a license, unless it's in a collective license process. So, that already exists, and if there's complaints on the issues like that, they certainly can take those on. With regard to the ordinance, I don't want to go through all of this, the seven pages of whereas and so on, but we've seen it all, being around the state here. I've been to probably 70 or 80 hearings around the state for these things over and over again. We were in Seminole County the other night, and they actually had, they have a similar market to yours here with about 400 properties in Seminole County. At the end of the day, after two years of discussion, they tossed it out again and said, "We don't need a regulation. It's not going to cure the problem of what you have. Noise, parking, and trash, ordinances you already have, those are the three big issues. They tackle them that way, they're going to deal with it that way." A lot of these other things, like I say, I mentioned in DBP already, they're already enforceable. You have some ways to do that. Simple is good, as Paul Seago from Expedia mentioned. That's what low barriers of entry for people to get into the programs, register a home, and be part of the process, those are the ones that are going to do it correctly. As I mentioned, I think, before here when I was here, in Osceola County, central Florida, they have 20,000 vacation rentals. The entry into that program is so easy. You get your business tax receipt, you pay your DTT, you get all your forms and things in place, you take a one-hour workshop, and boom, you're off and running. They know who you are, they know where you're going, and they know how you're managing your home. If there's a problem, they're going to find you. We have good working relationships with the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, and everybody else. When there's issues, they come up, you deal with it. Professional property managers deal with issues. They don't want problems. They, the bad actors aren't going to go away. You can double the size of this ordinance, and it's still going to add bad actors. They just don't go away. Somebody's robbing a bank, they're going to steal the car to get to in front of the bank. They don't care about getting caught for the car that they stole. It's, they don't care. Bad actors just do things wrong. And the way to curb that is to put some regulations in place that are going to get those people, and not the people that are doing it correctly, that are professionals in the industry. This is a $31 billion a year industry. We actually outweigh hotels in many cases on tax revenues brought in. So, we're doing a lot of things right. The whereas is here probably point out the worst for the worst, but we can curb that and help you correct that. We've seen it all, and we want to work with you on those things.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. The Honorable Lee Buck, Lee, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
I'm kind of wobbling. I played golf today in that heat, but I won't use up my three minutes. Everything just about has been covered. But anyway, I live at 136 Seventeenth Avenue North. I've got a family daughter, family that live at 135 Seventeenth Avenue North, another one at 140 Seventeenth Avenue North, and I've got a rental, vacation rental at 127. So, we surround it. But anyway, the vacation rental was built in 1938, and it's got 840 square feet upstairs and 840 down, but it's got four bedrooms and three baths. I've been in that house a million times because it was my second-grade teacher's house. But the gentleman that just talked about bathrooms and numbers, I don't know how you fix that, but it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense when he's had a lot of people in there and very well-controlled. The only problem is when they're approved, they shut it down at 10:00 at night, but I've got seven grandkids, and they have to be at school at 7:00 in the morning, but there's nothing I can do about that. So, anyway, my real concern is that, and I think you all are doing this from what I hear, is that the council do their best that they can do in Tallahassee to tweak anything in our city attorney to make it a little better, because I mentioned this at a meeting the other day. I was listening to a financial segment on TV, and this person said, "We've got X number of vacation rentals now. We've got 2,100 in the works." And I see this as the next Uber and Lyft type of organization, but if we do our homework and do our best to, you know, handle the situation, it's just, I think, something we're going to have to live with. But anyway, I thank you for your time. I thank all these people that have taken all of their time, because we've heard about everything you hear. I thank you, man.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate it. I just want to say real quick before we get to the next speaker, there was a bill in legislature this last session that ended just a bit ago, that was basically going to terminate all the city's rights, as I had mentioned. There was a bill sponsored by the name of Representative- There was a bill sponsor named Representative Jamie Grant, who was kind enough to meet with us, and actually our city attorney provided him compromise language that kind of kept him at bay instead of trying to push that bill last year. And the interesting thing is, we had originally said four people per bathroom, and he had requested three. So because we're trying to appease that bill sponsor again to get a fair, comprehensive legislature before the legislature, it's imperative that we find language, I think that's going to work, so. Just keep going, I'm deadging out here, I'm running out of gas. Okay, Melissa Messenger. Melissa, if you come forward, give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes now. Melissa Messenger. Okay? Now what I'm going to do is move to the cards of people who have voices and opinion but don't want to speak. The first category is opposed to the ordinance but do not wish to speak. Got Carol Meyer from Jacksonville Beach. Paulette Waterman, Jacksonville Beach. Susan Knowles, Jacksonville Beach. Lorraine White, it looks like, Jacksonville Beach. Rick Hightower, Jacksonville Beach. Patty Mason, Jacksonville Beach. David Valentino, Neptune Beach. Nora Hampton, Palmeter Beach. Charlie Hampton, Atlantic Beach. Joel Preston, Jax Beach. Trish Schrover, Jax Beach. Carol Donahue, Jacksonville Beach. Gabriel Prieto, Jacksonville Beach. William Gilbert, Jacksonville Beach. Connie Gilbert, Jacksonville Beach. Leslie Grill, Jacksonville Beach. And Maury Elitch, Jacksonville, Jacksonville Beach. And then we've got a small stack of people who are in support of the proposed ordinance but didn't want to speak. And that is Bruce Jacobs from Jacksonville Beach. Beth Atchison from Jacksonville Beach. And that's it. Now, is there anybody there that turned in a card that I didn't call? Because that's very possible, all the piles and everything I have up here. Okay, since nobody's done that, then let's move forward to closing comments, and what kind of guidance we want to provide to our city attorney to move forward. Now, the city attorney sent us two documents. I'll let you, Susan, take me up, Susan, I'm sorry. Denise, if you want to talk about those?
Sure. One was just a summary of the suggested regulations as they currently exist, and just as a refresher and a bullet point for you. These include requirements for registration with the city. That registration would require proof of the business tax receipts from the county and the city, proof of certificate of registration with the partner revenue, proof of license from DBPR. There are multiple minimal life safety requirements and Florida Building Code requirements listed within the body of the ordinance. Again, these already exist in statute. These were meant and intended to put people on notice of what was being required so they didn't have to know that I've got a business tax or 509. So it kind of enumerates what's already in 509, yes. But even if we were to, they exist. The CO detector being hardwired in. I would let Steve Shy, our Fire Marshal, speak to that. I believe that's still in 509 as well. I saw that come up as to the hardwiring of CO.
That's going to relate back to the change of occupancy and see how we tie that in to that requirement in there. It's with the statute, there's several things on this that depends on the structure itself, but yes. We'll double-check on the CO detector, but just the kind of barrage on it's required to have, the CO detector.
The automatic sprinkling, as you heard, is already in chapter 509. This regulation also looks at max occupancy limits, off-street parking standards, and solid waste handling standards. It covers requirements to comply with all other city regulations. Again, the noise, the setbacks, the stormwater. All we do is make reference in there to comply with what's currently in code. It has initial and ongoing compliance inspections currently. It has required language for lease agreements and postings. It designates a responsible party that's available 24/7 and with a two-hour response time. It is enforced by code enforcement under chapter 162, which includes the fines and fees as defined in that statute. The other document I gave you included some options, which I had heard from some of the previous planning commission meetings and other workshops and feedback that we've gotten, to try and help you address some of the concerns. So there have been additional ones made tonight, but some of the vacation rental registration issue, what was brought up initially was the ability or whether there was an ability to do single and collective or collective-type registration. I did call DBPR, they do offer collective licensing. It is something that we could look at doing as well, if that was something the council wanted to look at. Maybe it would be a collective certificate. And it could be issued to a licensed agent. We've heard from many agents who handle properties for multiple properties, and they want to be able to come and maybe do this for their properties. And so we could offer a collective certificate to a licensed agent. We would define licensed agent as an operator of a management company licensed with the unit owner through a rental agreement or contract between the two parties to hold up the dwelling unit for a vacation rental. And we would allow them to come in, and we could do, you know, DBPR, I've got some of their costing listed there for you, what that would run for our city. Again, our goal is compliance, so maybe you want to go left, maybe you want to, you know, whatever you want to do there. But right now, a one-time application fee with the DBPR is $50. If I'm a licensed agent that has five properties, I'm going to pay the $50. I'm going to pay $150 base fee, and I'm going to pay $10 for each additional unit. They also have a one-time $10 ATP fee, which is the Health and Environmental Protection fee. So if I have five units with DBPR, right now that would cost me $260. That's something the city could look at and then look at, you know, what kind of fee structure you want to put up in order to stand in compliance. There was also concern about the whereas clauses containing the information as to the non-regulation of HOA-type HOA homes, condo units, and owner-occupied. I recommend to keep those whereas's because they are your legislative intent as to why you don't want to regulate those, but we could add explicit language into the body of the ordinance itself, which would say, say, "Single-family, two-family, townhouse dwelling units subject to deed restrictions and covenants of a homeowners association, condominium units, and owner-occupied dwelling units, renting any portion thereof, shall not be subject to these regulations." And that would make it clear. Because when we do publish the ordinance, those whereas's are not a part of your regulation. They are your legislative intent. Another concern that was brought up is the multiple inspections, including the inspections behind. That's something that can be revisited, such as you do an initial inspection and give six months to a year to come into that initial inspection, and that inspection would only occur again upon change of ownership or a major modification. I define major modification elsewhere in the ordinance as anything that increases the max occupancy of the unit. So only if you're going to out-of-bedroom, out-of-bathroom, or change of ownership would an inspection be required again. That way, they are not dealing with annual inspections or fees. Also, defining max occupancy is at this council's discretion, whether that's three per bathroom, four per bathroom. We also put in R per 150 square feet. The ordinance says, written currently says 100, whichever is less. Your proposed ordinance said whichever is greater. That's a huge difference, and so you want to do the math on that. But you can define max occupancy as you see fit. What we could also add is potentially defining max occupancy as per adult, where the adult is defined at 16 years or older. There was concern about, I can read one, give it, not two, give it. Again, if it's under 16, they wouldn't be counted in the max occupancy calculation. So those were some of the options that I had tried to brainstorm to bring to you. Again, this is all at your pleasure. I did want to address just one thing about the cumbersome 21-page ordinance. That is total of nine pages regulation, honestly. The whereas clauses are not legislation, they are your intent. And they cover you as to why you're doing what you're doing. Because you say that there is a finding, and you've heard testimony here and before as to certain bad actors. Then finding that there are bad actors in the community is an appropriate finding. So again, whereas clauses are not regulation. There are a total of two that cover the enforcement mechanism. Two pages that cover chapter 162, how you go to the special magistrate. You have to have that pretty much outlined in your ordinance. There's a whole page that covers vesting, that vests in all current property owners and vests in current current fine leases. And the rest of it is whereas pages. So nine total pages cover what's actually in the regulation. And most of that is just, here's an application, here's what has to be in that application, and then we go on to define certain life safety standards. And so it's not 21 pages legislative regulation. You've heard about the Santa Monica case. In that case, they were trying to use zoning to preclude the use. Again, you know, we can't do that, but having it in your whereas clause is probably reasonable. So I didn't want you to go away thinking that that would preclude it. I'm happy to address any of the other issues.
First off, I want to thank you for a tremendous job. I think, you know, you did exactly what you asked us to do, and it wasn't easy to put it together in the most strict format. I know it didn't make you the most popular person, but I think it met the requirements for us. I have a suggestion, because we can't, this is a workshop, it's not a council meeting. I'm not going to be voting on anything tonight. I'm going to take a minute just to make a few comments, and then I'll open forward to others who want to do the same thing. I took some notes while a lot of folks were speaking, and there's some very good points there. I think when we first started, I brought up, and I continue to say, we're looking for a meeting ground. We're looking, we're not looking to be anti-A or B and B or anti-short-term rental. We're looking to provide the city the ability to enforce issues that are being done by bad actors, keep bad actors under control. A few of the things on the first page, first list that we talked about, the ones that are most important for me are registration with the city, occupation limitations, off-street parking standards, solid waste requirements and handling requirements, enforcement by code enforcement, magistrate, special magistrate, fines and fees. And I think we ought to look at what the legal limits are for us to, since we don't have the ability really to shut things down, we need to make things hurt for private, private offenders. One of the other things, I don't see it here, and I'm sure it's on here somewhere, but having some form, somebody to communicate with at 1:00 in the morning when we can't get people under control, I think might be important, or at least to be able to reach out to them and let them know that there's a genuine problem and their residents or their customers aren't being cooperative. You know, I mean, obviously, we can take them to jail, and there's things we can do, but we also need to set a standard and let them know that we're going to enforce the standard. The other thing is, I looked at the whole document, and it kind of overwhelms me. And I know that wasn't your intent, that, like you said, we had so many pages of whereas and so many pages of guidance from the state. I think it might be a good idea to make an addendum or an attachment that has a kind of a checklist on it of things that we would require for each person to qualify as an authorized veteran under the ordinance. I think that if there's a checklist of the shortened version, I think people feel a lot more comfortable with, okay, I need to do these 10 things, and I can have them done by tomorrow at 5:00, that type of thing. So the other, on the other page, the 16-year-old, and I think that's a great idea, actually. Somebody brought up, one of the early speakers brought up the point that they're in the hospital and they're going to bring one kid but not one grandkid, because I think we ought to look at 16-year-olds as being the occupants, you know, counting against the occupancy rate and potentially children, and I. And that's it for my list. Who's next? Mr. Doherty?
Thank you. I mean, I think it'd be reasonable. The thing that jumps out to me, which is most obvious and which has influences a lot of these issues, is the maximum occupancy. As one speaker, I think Cody Monroe, mentioned, some of the older, big houses have one bathroom. So I don't think we should penalize people because of the age of your house. What I think we should work on is a fair and reasonable scientific formula for working out the maximum occupancy. You know, we've heard stories of people leasing out homes to 15-plus people. That obviously is going to have an adverse effect on their neighbors. It's going to have an adverse effect on parking, waste, and perhaps noise. So, and I'm sure a lot of the owners self-regulate as far as the age of people that they rent to. Some people may have 18, 21, or 25. Obviously, the more mature people are, I'm speaking in general, like terms here. Usually, the more, the more responsible they are. But again, you know, without going through each line item specifically, I think if we can deal with occupancy, that would help make our job a lot easier, and it would, for those people that do this for a living, and for their neighbors, it might put their minds at ease. I mean, I'm sure we can be reasonable, reasonable about this, and really, if there was a three-bedroom house, you shouldn't have 17 people staying. I mean, that's just ridiculous. Yes, everything else is important. There's things that we could perhaps drop with the name, the list of guests, I think is a little too much. I think having a responsible, either homeowner or lead, a go-to representative from some management company, would be a good point of contact for the city to have. I don't think we need to know who's staying there. I mean, it's just the neighbor working well, and that's ridiculous. Sprinklers thing we covered, and I think we mentioned this before, it doesn't really affect a lot of properties, does it?
No.
Right. So really, Denise, I appreciate all the work you've put into this. I know you've made it as broad as possible because it doesn't encompass a lot. But I would like us to work on, this is just kind of my, I think, as far as the occupancy as the, as the primary task at hand. And then everything else should follow on from it. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Nichols?
The list of whereas's seems to be incredibly long, and some of them do seem to be opinion-based. I'd like you to get through and make sure they're factually based. I mean, one of them says that, granted, I mean, I don't sort of not believe this, but "So a short-term vacation rental is located within the established neighborhoods, disturb the quiet and dirty of the neighborhood, lower property values, and burn in the design layout of typical residential neighborhoods." So, I mean, I think the property values are actually going up, but it's not necessarily a good thing because it's the short-term rentals that are behind it. So I mean, I'd rather have stuff that's factual in these, and it just seems like some are, some of these are opinion-based. It's just, that it, go ahead.
I just want to, all your whereas's, of course, will make it whatever, but they're not all supposed to be. They're based on what you're hearing from the public, okay? So when you say opinion-based, or opinion-based, you're hearing from your public certain things. And so it is, you heard certain things, but there maybe you didn't hear about home values, I guess you did, but maybe there were other aspects you didn't hear that we liked to be.
Sure, it's just, some of them may not be accurate. It's just, it's just, some of them may not be accurate. Uh, I just...
Excuse me, so this...
I'm sorry, ma'am, the public comment's closed.
Oh, really? I thought it was a workshop.
Yeah, it is. I know, we're going to go into the council.
I, I mean, I would just like to clean it up a little bit to make sure, it doesn't seem like we, that we don't need this many, uh, just because it's 21 pages. And the other is, the second 509, it seems like we're reiterating stuff in ours that's already enforceable in, in 509 with the third-story sprinkler system and stuff. It just seems reiterating that, uh, it doesn't, it's, it's just creating length that we don't necessarily need. I think Mr. Shoddy can, is, I think he, he is going to force 509 your way.
I think the, Steve Shoddy, Jackson and Trail, one of the best ways to shorten that up some maybe, just in compliance with the Florida fire prevention period.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I think that's...
Bring a bunch out of it.
I'm watching, I'm looking around for head const, because you reached out, perhaps to get into the record. If I see four of you not in, I think I've got a direction to perhaps go with that.
And I, I agree with Councilman Dougherty that, you know, really, it's, um, a lot of it is the number of people staying in the places, and we need to come up with a good formula that is not going to be overly, I mean, 15, 16, 17 people staying in a house in a residential area, it just doesn't seem reasonable to me, and it seems like, um, the comp, there, there's got to be a way to put something together that's, that's going to be, you know, reasonable for, for the community. But then again, I mean, I, I've seen groups of four people make more noise than a group of 20. So, you know, it's, uh, we, we do have noise ordinances, and I, I mean, we do have other ways to, um, uh, do, to handle some of the problems that we have, but, but I do agree making a checklist and something that is viable for the people that are wanting to do short-term rentals, but also be able to, um, protect the, 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 the use of, um, the neighbors and, and the neighborhood. I mean, I know we have a problem at the, at the state level that if we start changing our whole communities into short-term rentals, we're going to lose our neighborhood and our community feel, and that's something I'm really nervous about. And I mean, I love Jacksonville Beach, I want us to be families and, and, and everything. I just don't want to see, you know, short-term rentals overtaking our whole community. Uh, that's what we're after.
Thank you, Senator Swobod.
Thank you. I agree, the occupancy permit, the occupancy max is the, is the key here, because that's going to directly relate to the parking, is all the trash, so we have to get that. And so I think we can deal with parking and trash a little later. Sorry, out there for everyone who always has problems with parking. Um, but if they're parked on places that have been out to park, they have to get ticketed or they have to get towed. Um, so there's, that's something that can be dealt with. Um, I do like the collective certificate, that does deal with a lot of the issues. If you have a property manager or an owner who owns multiple, um, apartments when they register, they shouldn't have to pay, they shouldn't have to register each one individually, but they all do have to be registered. Uh, I think about what some people have talked about with what is it we're trying to solve here? Um, and that was Ken Marsh with the beginning, and, um, one of them is tax revenue, just to make sure that everybody is, you know, playing by the same rules. You have to pay your taxes, I can't believe I'm saying this, but you have to pay your taxes, and you have your business tax that you have to pay, and your bed tax that you have to pay, and that helps to offset the costs of the, any stresses that are put out of our system as a city for your guests, uh, when your guests are visiting. So, yes, you can apply, but you can complain to the state, but the city needs to know how many of these businesses are operating, and we can share that information with the county to make sure that the bed taxes are being paid because we do get those bed ta, we get a percentage of those bed taxes, um, that come back to us. So that, I would definitely say that the registration's important. I agree with the, um, with the inspections, but with the updated, not all, not annual inspection. I think that's a little bit more on the onerous side. Taxes, property safety. One thing I did like that, um, we are spending a lot of time thinking about what the safety is of the guests who stay at these short-term rentals, and another person noted that, um, we're not really discussing the safety of our neighborhoods and the people who live in the city. And for that reason, I think it's good to have just a piece of paper in the, in the short-term rental unit saying what the noise hours are, where the hospital is, where the close, all those basic, you know, common courtesy things. I have a professor at UNF, and on the first day of class, I tell everybody where the bathrooms are, where the fire exits are, where the coffee is. Uh, those are just basic things that you have to do. Uh, and I would hope that everybody would be staying in one of these rentals, would receive information like that, and I would hate to see that you have to put it into the regulation, but if you have to put it into the regulation, they should know at least how to get to the hospital. Um, but other than that, I think we can go for it if it's the occupancy. But it comes to the registration, just the registration with the city, I don't know if we need to have all that language of, uh, do it with the state, do it with the county. Um, if you register with the city and you, there should be one certificate that you have that you needed all of those other ones to get, and they should just be able to show us that, they shouldn't have to show us all of these.
I don't know that, you know, they get a certificate for showing it at the DDPR, they're going to get the certificate. I don't know that it's going to say, but I saw the DLRs. So I don't know that they get one certificate that's going to prove, but they'll already have it. So the point is to just bring the copy of what you've already had to go get.
Okay. Uh, and I just have one question, it's more of a legal question. If we can't miss those with the fines, I think we have to make sure that the cost for registration is extremely low, extremely low. However, the cost for non-compliance is extremely high.
162 kind of limits us in our abilities there, using the special magistrate, and there are two schools of thought. I mean, you can go with extremely high fines and not use chapter 162. I mean, we can use it to the extent that we're going to have a special magistrate who's got to make the findings, but if we use chapter 162, otherwise, otherwise, we're going to have to have a different procedure and process put into place for hearing, wherever it is required, but not necessarily under chapter 162, which is what we have our special magistrate for right now. And I've seen the collectability of those fines be rather low, because under chapter 162, although, you know, I may have to take it several times, and I may be able to only do it at 500 top, or, and I forgot to mention this before, chapter 162 allows for $5,000 one-time irreparable, right? So it can be up to $5,000 if you find it's irreversible and irreparable. That has to be a finding made by the magistrate, but it could allow for that. Chapter 162 also allows you to lien the property. Okay? And that is the only way I think I've ever found that you get collectability, because when you do fines with no ability to really assess, you may or may not ever see those fines. Chapter 162 allows for filing of the lien on the property, they usually pay it.
That was my legal question, if one cannot prohibit a SDR from operating, if we can find that, but this doesn't make them pay, and that's not, you know, do you lien the question off? So that would be the ones that we do. Thank you.
Ms. Gold? Sorry, Ms. Gold?
Okay, I, I definitely believe in, uh, support registration. I tend to lean towards listing what's required, uh, as far as the tax receipts and all that, because I've talked to people who have short-term rentals and have told me how difficult it has been for them to figure out what they are supposed to do. And, um, I, I have no problem with putting it here so that it's really clear, and if it's in a checklist too, like the mayor has suggested, uh, it can only make things easier for the short-term rental owners, so they don't have to try to figure out who do I go to, where do I go, what do I do? I realize we have a lot of non-compliance going on right now, and a lot of it is because they don't know where they're supposed to go and what they're supposed to do. Um, so I really don't have an issue with putting that in our ordinance. Um, I agree with everyone else, the occupancy does, it is the, it is the biggest issue, and it's having the biggest impact on our neighborhoods. Um, and I also like the idea of the single and collective certificate, just because, you know, some of the short-term rental owners I've heard from, they have multiple properties and they want an easier way to deal with it, and that's fine, and I think it will help increase compliance. So I think compliance is key. Um, and then as far as the, the safety of the neighborhood and the neighbors, you know, we're talking about the safety, well, and I, and I'm fine with if we want to just reference the Florida fire code or whatever, I, I'm okay with that, although, again, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little more comfortable with spelling things out just because it, it makes it easier for the, the short-term rental people. But if, if we want to reduce it down and just say, reference the fire code, that's fine with me. Um, but as far as, when it comes to safety for the neighbors, um, I know that a lot of long-term rental owners require that you put the names of the people who are renting your property in the lease, and I don't have an issue with requiring that information to be included in their lease or whatever you call it. I know it's not coming to us, so it's not going to be a public record, but where I'm going is that this is a safety issue for our neighborhoods, because when there is a problem, if we can have that 24/7 contact, which that's the other thing I support too, because that's how we're going to increase the safety in our neighborhoods too, because we're going to be able to have someone who's reachable. But if we have something on, that's documented that says, these are the people that are supposed to be here, then it makes it a lot easier for our, our law enforcement to address the problem if there are people that are there that shouldn't be there. So, I, those, those are my thoughts. Um, I def, I, I'm fine with the inspections, with reducing the inspections like you suggested, Denise, I, you know, I'm fine with that. Um, and then also explicitly putting what is excluded from this ordinance, uh, like you did in number two, excluding the condos and the HOAs, you know, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Y'all set?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gold. Ms. Hoffman?
Um, a lot of what I have on my mind has already been said. I did want to say, I was hoping, um, I probably should have said this before we set the workshop, but, um, we heard a lot of just stories and kind of anecdotal. Um, a few people kind of towards the end gave us some really good specific, um, suggestions, which I liked, um, and I think when we, when we revisit this after it's been revised, that we should probably seek out some of those experts, because I think one of the things that we all agree, yes, we need regulation, but we also need voluntary compliance, and I think if we can make sure that the people that are already very active in this industry can point to things that are going to hold that up, that we should take that into consideration. Um, I, so a few things I did not agree with, I still do not agree with requiring a list of guests. Um, it doesn't, even if something did happen, there's nothing to enforce them with a complete list of guests, I just don't, I think it's unnecessary, I think it's an invasion. Um, I wanted to, and I also agree, if it's represented in other Florida statutes or similar, that we do not need to repeat it, but I think we should reference it, especially because if that statute's changed, then we have to go back and change ours, um, rather than it just being flexible with just referencing that compliance. Um, I, I do think occupancy is, is the biggest issue, and I think that having a solid, uh, way to enforce that is going to help solve most of the issues that we're having. I don't, I've never really understood why it's based on bathrooms and not bedrooms. Um, and I, uh, agree with Mr. Dougherty, there's a lot of really differently shaped houses in my neighborhood. It's a lot of older, you know, kind of those cinder block beach houses that might only have one bathroom, but they have three or four bedrooms. Um, certainly not enough for 17 people, but you get the idea. Um, a question that came up, has anybody been successful with a Burgh Harris claim based on short-term rental legislation?
I can tell you that what we started with and what we looked at first was flag of counties because they were sued under Burgh Harris, and they did pay some money. So what we looked at, though, was the ordinance that came out of the settlement agreement. So it was post-Burgh Harris, that was where we kind of went with what the court blessed after Burgh Harris. Um, and just to let you know, I have seen many jurisdictions do this different ways. What's proposed is your max occupancy, I have seen it by bathroom, I have seen it, um, I think one other jurisdiction does, like two per bedroom plus two for a common area or one, so there are many ways of looking at this, not looking for your direction. If you prefer it be per bedroom and what that might make sense as, um, if it's two per bedroom plus two for a common area, a living room per se, then we're happy to look at it.
Okay. And, uh, occupancy, I disagree with 16-years-old, um, that seems like a very arbitrary age. We're all somebody's children, so when somebody said their children couldn't come and visit, those children could be 50-years-old, um, they still can't come. Um, so I, I, I mean, what's the difference between a 16-year-old and a 17-year-old? I just, I don't, it's a body, and that's what we're concerned with, is the occupancy of the building. Um, so what, if it's 16 or 18, I don't know why that would be, um, different. So I think, you know, anything like that is...
I think, Chris, if I could interrupt, I'd do was, anything less than 16 doesn't count against the total occupancy.
Why not? It's an occupant. I mean, it's a, it's a body, it's, you know, and, I mean, I, I see that, but I, but I, to me, it's a body, it's, you know, 16-year-old can drive a car, they're, they may be parked in the dri, you know, so I don't, I, to me, it's a body's, a body is a body in this case in terms of occupancy, that may just be me, but I just, I felt like that was, um, somewhat arbitrary. Um, I probably have more, but I just, I wanted to say, I think I, I'm in favor of simplification, I'm in favor of doing, um, the right thing to encourage as close to 100% compliance as, as we can get. And again, it's going to be, it'll be, I think, if that doesn't solve the majority of the problems, then we have to ratchet up, and I think the people that are here are on notice that, you know, we're, we're really looking at these things for the first time. Oh, the other thing that I would say, no matter where we end up with all of this, um, somebody mentioned the training component, and I do think we need to have a significant education component, whether everybody who comes to apply for a short-term rental gets a little packet of information that gives them that list of the important, you know, that...
Checklist.
The checklist, the location of the hospital. Um, however far we want to go with that, I think the more we can educate the short-term rental owners, again, we'll also encourage voluntary compliance through that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Nichols, quick revisit?
Yep, very quickly. Um, I don't think the rental fees were largely distributed to the public, but I think a $500 initial, uh, application fee is, is going to be prohibitive to having, is going to reduce the number of people that are, um, I'd like to get that, I'd like to get that lower, and I'd like to have the, um, the violations be as high as they, as they can, maximum 160.
And so, yeah...
Yeah, that's different, that's for, that's for registration for the people that are leasing it, but the, sir, you still have 500 is the...
That would change according to this collective licensing situation, and, and what I'm hearing from you is, is that you like it reduced, and I think I've heard that from most of the councils.
Yeah.
And so I am going to be reducing that. I didn't get a number, I just, you know, whether you want me to start with 50 and $10, you know, $50 application and register and $10 per unit, and that's a collective, so really that's probably fairly reasonable.
I think that's true.
And I can start with that? Okay. In the training component, just to, to make you aware, I've created many forms. Uh, these include forms, um, for a proposed sample lease language, um, these include a sample posting with the information as we would expect it. So there are a lot of things I have created, if you haven't seen, they're just waiting to see what makes it to the end of the show, and yes, they can be available, I think we can make them a part of a, a packet of information. But I will add a checklist component based on reducing some of what you want to see, like checkered 509, life safety code, taking that out, so that's not going to be listed on our checklist, except that perhaps as an affidavit on the application that I will remain compliant with Florida bill and code, um, Florida fire code, and checkered 509. All right? So, yes, I think these are some great things I can go and change and bring back. Um, I guess my question would be, do I bring it back to you first or the planning commission?
Planning commission.
Okay.
Ms. Hoffman? Yeah, a quick revisit?
Very quick, I just also, I wanted to echo, I think, Mr. Nichols' comments on the warehouse clauses, that they, they are written in a negative fashion. Um, some of your findings will be negative in order to justify your regulation, but I understand what you're saying, and I'm going to try and highlight the ones that I think you, you may be referring to, um, but without clear rationale or from a consensus of everyone.
But can we say can be? You know, short-term rentals can be, because when you say, um, you know, short-term, can create, oh, wait, that one does it. But there's some of them that are just very, they're negative and all-encompassing, instead of, I mean, we've heard today, there's some that are low to no impact, that I would... of, I mean, we've heard today, there's some that are low to no impact, that I wouldn't want to paint them with that same brush.
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Ms. Bubba, a quick revisit?
Yes, please, thank you. And some of the whereas is, though, people testify under oath at the planning commission that this was happening, so it's not that they can be, it's that it has been documented that this is an issue. You gave us the planning commission, if they all have to go under oath whenever you're going up, that you swear that this is the truth, and so that's going into the record saying that this is an issue. So, the whereas is, if they're not, if they're not, if they weren't stated in that instance, I would say then it would be a can, but if it was stated at the planning commission under oath, I would say it has been.
Okay, thank you. The, the progression of this is going to be going before the planning commission on July 22nd, so for those of you that want to attend the planning commission for any additional comments, our city attorney is going to be making some modifications based off suggestions from the council this evening. And once that's done, it'll be made available to the public, including all members of the council. You can take your comments and bring them to the planning commission, what, did I say that wrong?
No, I'm just thinking, she's going two weeks, and I'm going, I know.
I know, took her win, is it going to be, and she, it was a little...
Let's just say that's our goal, and we'll, we'll keep the information posted. But 7/22 is the planning commission meeting, then there will be two readings afterwards with the city council, August 5th and August 19th. So, the objective here has been multi-fold. One of the things that we hope to accomplish from this process is to find a fair compromise language, so that we can take that back to Representative Jamie Grant this next session. And committees start early this year, they start in September. So, if we can get this through our commission, through our council, and, and make this all work, then we'll have a good basis to go to the state and say, let's take this to the next level, and make this a statewide type of an issue, where it's a fair compromise. So, oh, yes, ma'am.
I could just ask for one other clarification, because I know we want to all go up about max occupancy, but I don't know where to begin to make the modification, if there's any consensus on, do we want to stay with bathrooms? I understand we've got, as you said, three-bedroom homes with one bath, so this doesn't seem to work. Should I be...
Why do you think it's...
Well, your square footage gets a little hard, because you can end up with a very large house with not many bedrooms, and not many bathrooms, no parking, but a whole lot of people, because it's got a whole lot of square footage. You know, if I, if you want to, I can put in something like two per bedroom plus two per common room, that gives some people time to think about that and talk about that.
Yeah, sure.
And, and maybe they bring back something else, I'm not sure.
I did have Airbnb, I mean, they, they sent a red line that modified it to say maximal house occupancy. We limited it to two persons per bedroom, and then struck out the three-person for air-conditioned full bathroom, or one person for 150 square feet, so...
But they also said whichever is greater, right?
No, this, and it says, no, whichever is less.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would, I mean, if it was pretty better than else, these sick people staying there, is that sufficient?
Okay. Anything else, ma'am, attorney?
Thank you. No, that, that doesn't need to be...
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your patience and your goodwill and your kindness, and I hope you have a good night.